Good morning. I will call to order our special meeting here on August 5th. I am your Mayor Brendan Kalfus. Welcome. We will start this meeting off with our flag salute. So if everyone can please stand, face the flag and place your right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, instead of doing all the names, can you just please note that all City Council members and all Commissioners are here and present?
So noted, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We will start this meeting off with our business item. We have one item on the agenda. Item number one is conduct a joint workshop regarding boards, committees, and commissions in the city of Temecula. With that, we'll start off with public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have three public comments as this is a business item. Each speaker has up to five minutes, and we would ask that the speakers come up to the podium in the front here, right next to the chart. The first speaker is Michael Davis, to be followed by Eric Faulkner. Michael, welcome.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to have time to speak and share with you this morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here, a part of this workshop today, to hear about your future plans of care for these committees. I'm specifically here as a pastor of Temecula United Methodist Church, as well as a member of the Temecula Marietta Interfaith Council to share with you this morning over some support that I want you to hold in mind as you care for the Race Equality Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I have seen over the last few months, being here in Temecula, a rise in the voices that want to see care for marginalized people. I've watched actions at the city duck pond grow from one person to 100 people to thousands of people. Individuals that want to know that their city cares for every resident and is willing to look in very specific ways on how to care for those residents, their needs, their concerns, but also, more importantly, their fears. When we have a committee like this, the Ready Committee, it shows the town that you are listening to them. Sometimes it shows even within your busyness that their needs matter, even if they don't feel that they can speak to you directly. I know in some ways that there's already been decisions made on what will happen next for the Ready Committee, but I want you to not just listen, I want you to see what is happening in Temecula. I watch these crowds get bigger and bigger and bigger, and they want to know that you are listening to them. To allow a committee like the Ready Committee to stand within itself, within a working process within itself, you are showing these individuals you are listening and you are caring. Thank you for allowing me to be in this space today. I'm excited to hear the plans that you are processing on what could be next. I'm excited to hear the plans that you are processing on how to continue to care for every resident of Temecula. I'm excited to celebrate with you your plans. I'm also excited that you allow me to have the voice to come back here in the future and challenge you on those plans if I see that there's places that those needs still aren't being seen. But within the agreements and celebrations and even within the disagreements, it's the conversation that matters. The citizens of Temecula need to see that that conversations are taking place so that things can grow that everyone's cared for. So again, thank you for taking this time today. Thank you for allowing us all to be here to hear your strategies, and I'm blessed that you have allowed me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Faulkner, to be followed by Gillian Larson.
Good morning, Mr. Faulkner.
Good morning, Mayor. How are you doing this morning?
Fantastic.
Good to see you, City Council and the Commissions. I'm here just to just voice up just my support for the Commissions that are intact right now, Ready and the Community Service Commission. These are your forward-facing Commissions. These are your eyes and ears out in the community. All of you do not hold town halls in different precincts across the across the city on a regular basis. I think you should, particularly if you're planning on dismantling the two Commissions and rolling into one. It means that you have to engage a little bit more as leadership of this city. These have been your eyes and ears and extensions of you out in the community to see what's going on, to be a voice, a boots-on-the-ground, to bring that information back to you. And I think they've done a great job over the years. If they haven't been employed, that comes to leadership, right? So how we've been actually using them, increasing their capability to do things in the community, that comes from demands and you being able to assign them that work. So as we make the decision going forward and how that looks, you know, whether that's in a Community Engagement Commission or something that continues to engage and be the voice for you as the leaders of this city, I think there still needs to be something in place, not an ad hoc group that you bring together, because these are extensions of you, and they've done a great job. I would also, with no emotions attached, is the fact that we did this wrong. This workshop should have been held before you made the decision to think about getting ready the Commissions. You need to you need to get input from those people who have been out there doing the work for you. And it's 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 it, you know, I had already resigned in my position last year because I wanted to give someone else a chance. If I continue to do it and be engaged, I'm that military guy that's always out in the community, always engaged in every event you had, that's who I am. But the fact of the matter, if I keep submitting for it, I'll probably continue to get selected for the position. I'm not saying anything, it's just the work that you put into it. But that's the work they put into, and I think I think they garnered the respect for you to pull them together before you even when you when you thought about having this conversation and getting feedback from them, because they were the ones doing the work. Those are the ones you employed and were selected to do this work, and to have a workshop after the fact when we've kind of made up some decisions behind the closed doors that you have had a conversation about. And to not pull them in, I think that did a disservice to these people that are been out here doing the work for you. I think as you go forward and you start to look at that, I would look at that, if you have if you've employed people to do the work, why don't we have a conversation with them to figure out what is the best plan for, because they have some great ideas they could have given you that we can be prepared if we're planning on dismantling these Commissions and then going to something, that maybe they had some great feedback for you. Not getting the feedback now, I think is just it was just the wrong focus and the wrong direction in the process that you came up with to actually solicit this work, get this workshop going to get their feedback. So with that said, thank you for the opportunity to serve as a Commissioner. I had a great time on the Ready Commission and with some just fabulous people that are out in the community where you can't be. I mean, we're in a space where we have to take what we do to the community, not have the community come to us. We've changed the meetings to 3:00, you're going to get minimal people coming to your meetings now, all right? So at 3:00, people are at work or whatever. So these were your extensions out in the community to continue to bring that feedback back to you. So I just, last thing, if they go away, that means all of you have to get out of your get out of your work workspace, get out of this building, and be engaged in the community, in your precincts, and go listen to people that don't agree with you. Don't be fearful to be outside of this 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 building and go to listen to people that don't agree with you to get insights and 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 great opportunities to improve this city. So thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for what you do as leaders of the city, and thank you for these great Commissions that are here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Gillian Larson, to be followed by Brent Brent Burton. Okay.
Good morning, Mrs. Larson.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor, Council members, Commissioners. I actually hadn't intended to speak at this point of the meeting. I'm very inclined to ready, aim, fire. I didn't want to come and do what I'm thinking doing now is fire, ready, aim. I wanted to hear what all of you had to say, what your ideas were to make these changes. But however, I guess that you wanted to hear what we had to say. So I've been a resident in Temecula for about 22, 23 years, very involved in the community wherever I can be. I try to keep my boots on the ground, so to speak, and I am one of your people. We are the people of Temecula. All of the Commissions are your people, your eyes, your hearts, your souls, and we see it. We see them at all these events. We go to these events, we see all of the Commissioners from Ready and Planning Community Services. That's who you guys are. I hate to say it, but we, and I'm saying we because I'm part of every age, I mean, I know I'm the old one, but I am I am a citizen here. We don't see all the Council members there. We see the Ready Commissioners there. We see their social media posts. We see them there, we can speak to them. And people say to me, yeah, that's really great. I don't know what they belong to, they don't always know, but they're there representing the city. They kind of think maybe they're also part of the City Council, but they are there for people to speak to. They can give you the feedback that they hear from people. Their social media posts are huge, having fun, showing what Temecula has to offer. And that's what we, as the people of Temecula, want. And I think so many people misunderstand particularly what the Ready Commission does is. They all just hop on this bandwagon that seems to be a huge problem nationally, and it's for everybody. It's for the small, the big, the old, the young, the challenged, everybody. That is what Ready services. They are who we are. And I think it's, I have no idea what you're going to say, and that's why I didn't want to speak early. But I have no idea what you can do to make that stay where both of these sets of Commissioners get out into the public and continue to put it on social media promoting our town. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing what you've got to say. And I hope it isn't that you're all just buckling, and I hate to use that word, and I hope that you have looked at everything and you are going to produce something that is satisfactory to the public, to the citizens of this town, not just some. So thank you very much for your time and the opportunity to at least say what I want to say, and I probably will have something to say at the end, but obviously won't have this opportunity. So thank you. Thank you, Commissioners on the Ready Commission. Thank you, Commissioners on the Community Service Commission. We see you. And in South Africa, or Africa, there's an expression, "Saobona," and that means I see you. It's not just hello, it's I see you. And we, the citizens of Temecula, saobona.
Thank you very much, Ms. Larson.
The next, the next speaker is Brent Burton, to be followed by our last speaker, Toya Burton.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. My name is Brent Burton, and I am new to Temecula. I moved here about four years ago with my wife from Los Angeles. I retired from LA County Fire Department after 37 years as a captain, where I served as a co-founder of the African American Firefighter Museum and the Black Firefighter Association. I stand today to speak in opposition of the disbanding of the Ready Commission. I am no stranger to history and to issues that plague our country and our state, particularly our community, when it comes to race. When we moved here, I had some apprehension, because I've seen a lot of the flags and a lot of the paraphernalia that speaks of ultra-conservatism, but I gave it an open mind, my wife and I did, and I looked at different things. But I read an article about Temecula football players accused of racial slurs, threats in in games against Reno Valley team. And as I read further this story, it talked about how parents, adults, football players were taunting these players and cheerleaders that came from another school to play them, particularly the black students. And I was really taken aback by that and hurt. And when I learned there was a Ready Commission, I said, okay, well, this Commission looks at these kind of issues, and they can address these kind of issues and come up with solutions of how to make our community better. But then I learned we're disbanding this Commission. This Commission doesn't cost the city any money. It's the eyes and ears for this city to look at these specific issues. And without this Commission, I'm not sure what it's going to be replaced with to look at these things. So again, I hope that this body will reconsider that decision and restore the Ready Commission to address these issues, because they still plague our country, our state, and our community. And I just hope that something comes from that, and we can keep this Commission intact. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
And our last speaker is Toya MacBurton.
Good morning. Good morning. My husband stole a little bit of my thunder, but I was going to let you look at the city through our eyes, at the risk of, you know, being a little too blunt. When we decided to move here, I had always come here, I knew that I always loved this city. So when my husband was ready to retire after 37 years, and I decided that I was going to start winding down my business, I'm a real estate broker and I own and operate my business still in Los Angeles, we started looking for a place to live. We were looking for a place that was a little bit more spread out than Los Angeles, that had better city services, and we were mostly looking for a sense of community. And as we started to look around to, you know, look at real estate to find a home, you know, we were a little frightened when we saw all of, you know, we saw a couple kiosk out with, you know, advertising for President Trump with clear racist and clear violent undertones. We see the big flags being flown behind the large pickup trucks with, if you're a minority, you know that generally, usually, that doesn't mean that you're, you know, celebrating America. It means that this is for us. So I, you know, we talked about it, we had some concerns. So I dug a little deeper, I researched, I didn't want to make assumptions. So I looked, I found out that there was a Ready Commission. Okay, maybe I'm not right here. I found out that there was a quality of life master plan. I'm excited about that. And I also found out that Temecula is a city that has a large population of military and retired military. So probably I'm not seeing what I think I'm seeing. Okay, and maybe I'm misinterpreting. So we buy a home, we live here, and I will say that we absolutely love it here. You will have to dynamite us out of here. This is a beautiful community. I love it. I intend for this to be my forever home. But in our short time that we've been here, we've seen some things. We're both very engaged in the nonprofit world, and we do a lot to try to mentor kids, which gives us gives us exposure to them. I've had no less than three situations where I've walked through strip malls and heard groups of kids flying the N-word. With the kids that we work with, you know, I hear a lot about their struggles in the schools, and we know that these kids aren't on an island. And I'm not saying that there there should be a law that makes everybody like minorities. No, there shouldn't be. You have a right to like who you like, but I really believe that this is a community that wants to be a community. And I think that the Ready Commission offers us some direction in achieving that. I know that the vote has already taken place, and my hope is that there's a plan to put something in place to help those of us who want to be community and who want to hear each other. I hope that there's going to be something put in place that's going to allow us to do that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not, Mr. Mayor. That concludes all public comments on this matter.
Thank you very much. Can we move on to our staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are going to go ahead and move on to the staff report at this time. And before I go ahead and go through the slides, we are going to hear from our city manager, who is joining us from yonder this morning via Zoom, but didn't want to miss this opportunity to share some comments, as well as be a part of this important conversation. Good morning, Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Randy. Can everyone hear me? Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning. We can hear you loud and clear.
Right on. Okay, I'll jump right into it. So good morning, members of the City Council, Community Services Commissioners, Ready Commissioners. I'd like to thank you for your attendance, your participation today. I'd also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge each and every Commissioner here in attendance and genuinely say thank you. Thank you for your service to the city of Temecula. Thank you for showing up, and thank you for caring and wanting to make our city better. There really is a collective effort and diversity of thought that makes us better, and my team hears me say this often, iron sharpens iron. My other important point and disclosure, Randy kind of mentioned it on the front end, I had planned a family vacation long before the City Council set this workshop date, so that is the reason for my remote participation today. By way of background, at the City Council meeting of April 22nd, 2025, the Council gave specific direction on a variety of areas that brings us to this workshop today. The City Council made the collective decision to collapse the Traffic Safety Commission and fold all current and any related functions into and under the purview of the Planning Commission. The City Council made the collective decision to sunset both the Community Service Commission and Ready Commission effective December 31, 2025. The City Council directed myself and the staff to organize a workshop among both the Community Service Commission and Ready Commissioners to discuss, listen, and begin formulating any next steps with respect to the future. For any technical questions and perspective on today's conversation, we have department heads in attendance that have competently supported these respective Commissions for years, as well as professionals that serve and support our OTLAC and our Planning Commission efforts. In Matt Peters' absence, I know Brandon Rabideau is there in his seat. He also has the distinction of overseeing the upcoming General Plan Amendment effort, and will be bringing an item to the City Council on August 12th for clarity, consensus on the methodology recommended for selecting what we affectionately call the GPAC, or the General Plan Advisory Committee. The GPAC will be made up of City Council-appointed individuals and/or organizations that will be charged with a specific mission and task and work for the next 12 to 18 months, helping to chart our general plan, community work, and helping shape Temecula for the next 20 years. It is envisioned this committee will be exposed to every aspect of city governance, whether that be transportation, land use, park and rec, financial, community engagement, just to name a few. Upon completion of this task, the committee will be collapsed, and recommendations and policy will go before the City Council and incorporation into our general plan. I do have some recommendations as it pertains to today's conversation, specific to the city standing up the GPAC, and I'm prepared to share with the Council where and when appropriate this morning. Once we have full City Council direction and consensus on the desired makeup of this committee on August 12th, we will recruit appropriately, and then we'll lean on our general plan consultants to assist us in getting the word out beyond our typical platforms. And we would expect to close the recruitment and bring forward applications for appointments in front of the City Council, probably by late September. At this time, I'll turn it back over to our City Clerk for any additional instructions or table setting, and allow her to provide an appropriate introduction to our facilitator today, Andy Pendoli.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you for joining us from your vacation. You can't, you may or may not be able to see, but some of us are are wearing some attire in your honor. So this morning, I think the first thing, I kind of, just as the as the Legislative Director for this city, as the City Clerk for this city, as a liaison to one of its Commissioners, I can't go through this presentation without first saying thank you. Thank you to Commissioners who have served now and previously, and those who will serve in the future, including the Ready Commissioners, including Community Services Commissioners, including planning, traffic safety. Over the years, we've had many different types of boards, committees, and commissions. So thank you for your service, and know that community itself is, as one of our speakers indicated, is grateful as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. So today's overview, okay, so first of all, it's not that serious. This is supposed to be informal, and we are going to have an icebreaker here shortly. So this is this is workshop design, it's not supposed to be a formal meeting, so hopefully everybody can get up, stretch, all that kind of good stuff. We've got some munchies over here on this counter over here, so so it's designed to be an informal workshop. We're going to divide this into about three different sections. The first section, we're going to kind of level set. We're going to revise kind of, I won't say revise, we're going to just level set and lay the foundation for what brings us here today, just to make sure everybody in the room understands what has happened and what hasn't happened, and we can all get on the same page on that. Second portion of our workshop is going to be the actual facilitation. And then Section 3 of our workshop is going to be general direction from the Council based on everything that they have heard. I will say today's meeting, as it is an informal workshop, is for general direction only, okay, as all of our workshops are. Today's meeting is being recorded, so if for some reason you want to go back and listen, whether you're a Council member, Commissioner, members of the audience, you'll have the ability to do that on YouTube. There's a little note at the bottom of that slide that, just please note that when we say Commissions, unless we indicate otherwise, we're referring to everybody. Boards, committees, commissions, task force, any other working groups, any other nomenclature that you can think of, we're just using the generic Commissions reference to lump it all in. All right, so a few logistical items. As I indicated, it's informal, everybody breathe, this is designed to actually have a conversation and and provide some opportunity to co-create something in the future that is going to serve the needs of the community, not now, but also into the future. The Commissioners and Council members, you guys did have a little homework assignment. We're not collecting it, it's okay. You don't have to turn it in or anything like that, but you'll notice today's facilitation is going to be based on those eight questions. So just keep those in mind. You have some printed materials in front of you. You have the eight questions, you have the the email that was sent out by the City Manager and myself, and then you have a notes for reflection. Here's the deal with the notes for reflection. If you would like, this is completely voluntary, if you would like, you can give those to me at the end, and you don't have to put your name on it. You don't have to put your name on it at all. So so you can take your own notes, that you can either use it for yourself, if you want to, as we go through the questions, use it for yourself, and if you feel like you want to go ahead and and add, you're you're more than welcome. So that's what's going on there. So for right now, we're going to start with Section 1. So we're going to level set, even the playing field here as far as knowledge is concerned. And talk a little bit about our local authority for commissions, again, referencing the big bubble. What are they? What is their purpose? Our current quick demographic review and previous meeting recaps. So in the Temecula Municipal Code, the City Council actually has the authority to go ahead and create any boards, committees, and commissions that it wants. Most of those are created via resolution, and in the resolution, it says what their purpose is, what their meeting time is, what their jurisdiction is. Planning Commission is the only one that actually also derives its authority from state law itself. So that's why we affectionately refer to Planning Commission and Old Town Local Review Board, or Old Town Local Advisory Committee now, as the kind of the technical commissions or the technical advisory bodies, and like our Community Services, our Ready, those are more the people-oriented, community-oriented kinds of commissions. But at the end of the day, all, everything that is created falls under our Temecula Municipal Code. So generally speaking, this is big picture. This isn't just Temecula, this is big picture all across the state and even beyond. Boards, committees, commissions, task forces, these are advisory bodies. They are advisory bodies to the City Council, and they typically study very specific topics or specific areas of policy. They go ahead and gather public input, and then they make those recommendations to the City Council based on the topics that are assigned to them. Again, some have statutory authority and others have local. Every single one of these has an identity- Every single one of these has an identified work plan. Every single one of them has an identified work plan. Some of you will, and they also have a self-generating agenda. Some of you will recall Ready Commission had a three-year ready initiative that was their work plan for the first three years. And they are distinct from city council, the city council always retains final decision-making authority, and they are distinct from staff who actually implement city council direction and administer city programs and services. They're also distinct from the community at large when acting in their official capacity, because they actually are acting in a holistic viewpoint, as opposed to an individualistic viewpoint. So whoever those advisory body representatives are, they are acting on the behalf of the community, not acting on behalf of themselves. So here's the bottom line, this is best practice across the board on this topic. Advisory groups generally exist to address the modern-day needs of a community. As most, several individuals in this room know, over the last 35-plus years, commissions have represented an opportunity for meaningful civic engagement and resident feedback as the city was forming and the community was forming. Commissions are, these bodies are meant to evolve with the community. As the community changes, by way of growth, priorities, technologies, efficiencies, new issues and topics arise in the community, these bodies are also meant to evolve with that. Previous efforts and this workshop are part of the opportunity to create that alignment on behalf of the city and the community, to address the modern-day needs of the community and make sure that any of our advisory bodies are relevant to today's needs of the community. So just a quick reminder, I'm not going to go through all of this, but our median age in Temecula is 38, our population is roughly 113,000. You know, we're pretty evenly based by gender, we are heavy on the family household side. So about 80% of our community are family households, 65% owner-occupied, very diverse community. So, and then there is about 25% of our community where English is not their first language at home, or they speak a language other than English at home. As far as education, our community has a very high percentage of college degrees, several associates, bachelors, and even beyond that, so very highly educated community. Median income is, average household income is 145, median household is 115. We do have about 9% of the population that does live at or below the poverty line, so that is definitely something we have to consider. You'll see, we are heavy on the white collar and service, 16% on the blue collar. And then our median commute is about 38 minutes, and most of our folks do drive alone. So in regards to previous meetings, on January 28th, the city council provided staff unanimous direction for a wholesale review of its boards, committees, and commissions, our advisory bodies. Again, the existing advisory bodies were established at different times over the city's 35-year history. This was the first time we were doing this in 35 years. So each of the bodies was formed at different times for different purposes, and now we are moving out of that kind of, that initial building, establishing the city and the community, into maintaining the city and the community. And so the council felt it was the right time to go ahead and look at that. With limited financial and staff resources moving forward, local governments often do evaluate their advisory body structure to ensure that they are providing the most effective and efficient support to the residents and the organization, based on, again, the modern-day needs of the community. So staff was directed to conduct research and return. So we spent a lot of time looking at boards and committees and commissions in other jurisdictions, did a lot of analysis on what's going on in Urusay County, did a lot of demographic analysis, did a lot of analysis on the history of boards, committees, and commissions here in the city, what every single body was created for, and whether or not that purpose has been fulfilled, and whether or not changes are recommended. So at the April 22nd meeting, council went ahead and reviewed the original purpose and subject matter jurisdiction of each of its advisory bodies. They looked at these demographics, they looked at the historical and regional research, and council provided direction, as the city manager mentioned, to go ahead and retain the two technical-oriented bodies, the Planning Commission, again, that law comes from state law statute, and Old Town Local Advisory Committee, which is also working with the Old Town Specific Plan. So their agendas are pretty much self-generated, and they have an ongoing work plan. Now, even for those two, the council did direct that all of those terms would also end December 31st, and a future recruitment will be needed for those two bodies as well. In addition, council also provided direction to go ahead and sunset all the terms for the community-oriented bodies, namely the Community Services and Ready Commission, effective December 31st, 2025, and to go ahead and conduct a joint workshop with both to consider the creation and need for a new community-oriented body in the future. Now, it's really important to note that the original resolutions of the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission that established most of those, if you looked at the purpose and the jurisdiction and the topics that they were to address, those were completed. So, for example, the Community Services Parks and Rec Commission was originally put together and designed to oversee the creation of the new parks in the city, oversee the naming of new facilities in the cities. Well, as we know, now there are 42 parks, I think that number is correct, and several of the facilities have already been built out. So that original purpose has come to fruition. Also, with the Ready Commission, their original charge was a multi-year, multi-phase ready initiative. And so we went back to council several times and checked off the things that were on that particular list. And so their original charge was also completed. So with that being done, the council went ahead and disbanded, oops, both of those commissions, effective December 31st, 2025, with the caveat that we now come back to this workshop and figure out if there are any community, modern-day community-related needs that need to be addressed, that may require a community-facing commission, community-facing body, and what would that look like? Now, there is one caveat to all of this. We do have one upcoming meeting, as the city manager indicated. The city is, that meeting's going to happen on August 12th. The city is going to be undertaking a general plan update that is going to involve a comprehensive, multi-phase process aimed at guiding the city's future development and quality of life. It's a long-term vision for land use, circulation, housing, public safety, parks and recreation, and other key aspects of the community itself. The process itself is going to have extensive public engagement, environmental review, and then eventually adoption by the local governing body. The council will be creating a General Plan Advisory Committee, again, affectionately referred to as GPAC. At the next meeting, next Tuesday, we will be asking council if they are ready to go ahead and authorize the recruitment. We have built out the application and everything else, we've been working very closely with the community development department and the consultant to build out the application. And we're going to have approximately 15 members of community who actually live, work, and/or play in the city. So it's meant to be a very diverse group of individuals. That group is going to do work lasting between 12 and 18 months, and then GPAC will have identified a variety of opportunities and challenges facing the community now and into the future. And so the city council will make the recruitment period, it's going to open August 15th, so 10 days, run for 30 days, and on September 15th. And at the September 23rd meeting, the council's going to go ahead and make those appointments, which are going to run a minimum through December 31st, 2026. The reason this is really important to this conversation today is because when we talk about identifying the modern-day needs of a community, especially with public-facing advisory bodies acting on behalf of the city council, it's really important that we understand what those needs are. And so it is anticipated that a lot of those needs will be identified as a part of the general plan update process, so something for everyone to think about. Okay, so with that, we are into Section 2. And before we get in there, does anybody have any questions about the factual kind of background on this? Okay, great. Well, with that, I'm going to bring the fun into the room. Andy, who is our facilitator today, is not a stranger to the city of Temecula. He actually brings over 25 years of experience as a facilitator and strategic planner and public engagement specialist. His work spans sectors such as the economic development, transportation, public health, human services, and youth development. And again, he's not a stranger to Temecula. He helped out with our youth master plan, he helped out with our Uptown Specific Plan, and most importantly, recently, he helped out with our Quality of Life Master Plan. So Andy, thank you for being here, we appreciate you.
Thank you for having me. Great to see everybody. So thank you, Randy, it's always a pleasure to be back. As you've heard, I have a little history with the city, and my own little story I tell, some of you have seen me up here before, my great-grandmother was, mid-1900s owned the Temecula Hotel for a while. And my dad told great stories, he was living on the East Coast, but as a little, I don't know, eight-year-old came to visit his grandparents, and he's just like, "This is like the Lone Ranger out here, this is amazing," you know? All the stuff he was starting to see on TV was emerging, you know? So anyway, small story. But I do live and work in the San Diego region, and get to work in other parts of Southern California, so no stranger to your community. So again, I want to thank you for having me back, I really enjoy these kind of unique conversations, these workshops overall. So just a couple of things I'll mention before we do our icebreaker, building on the logistics that Randy mentioned, not planning to kind of take a formal break in the discussion, the proceedings, as Randy noted, really informal here, please do, as you need, get up, have some more refreshments, if you need to step out of the room, of course, as you like, as needed, as we go overall. So, and of course, note taking, I really appreciate Randy and the staff providing you with the kind of the notes, the crib sheet, if you want to provide more notes, just to reemphasize that, you know, taking just your own personal notes, or after we get through the conversation, if you have more thoughts on previous topics, and you want to write those and submit those as, you know, part of our notes for today, greatly appreciate that too, so want to encourage that as well. And then, let's see, any other highlights for me? I guess, yeah, why don't we move into the icebreaker, and then we'll talk a little bit more about getting into the conversation? So to kind of kick things off, I'd like to hear from each of you, well, this will be the opportunity for each of you to kind of give a brief self-introduction, I know virtually everybody here knows each other, but we'll go briefly around the table, just asking for a brief self-introduction of yourself, and one word that you think, that comes to mind when you think of Temecula. So I'll give you an example, community, you know, I'll offer that as an outsider here, but I just, you know, the community, the sense of community, the strength of this community is just so palpable here, and I get to work in a lot of different communities, so I just want to give you props for that, that shows up in a lot of different ways. So it's one of the great reasons I like coming back. So one of the rules now on going around the table is that, once a word has been put on the table, if you will, as I just did, because I'm participating a little bit here, it's off the table, so now nobody gets to repeat that. So I already took community off the table, half of you are like, "There goes my word." So maybe come up with two or three, so you have in your back pocket, so as we go along, and we'll go kind of clockwise, so Denise, you get the benefit of kind of having the open slate, aside from community. But maybe think of a couple, so you make sure you get a fresh new one for us as we go through. And last quick thing I'll say before Denise starts us off, I'll take some very high-level notes just as we go, just on the whiteboard here. Again, you have all your normal standard note-taking, record-keeping here as part of this workshop, so I'll keep it high-level, my apologies in advance if I miss some nuance of anything you said on the whiteboard. So that was my last note on that, I think, for now. But Ms. Wilson, Denise, please, if you don't mind kicking things off, one word you think of, what comes to mind when you think of Temecula?
So when I think of, again, my name is Denise Wilson, one of your commissioners, original member, proud to say that. One thing that I think of for Temecula is a good vibe. You know, when you're riding around town, whether it's in wine country, or Old Town, or at the mall, I feel a good vibe from our community, and I would like to keep that.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Jackie Steed, one of the original Ready Members. I think opportunity, opportunity for families, opportunity for businesses, opportunity for
Crystal Pastorian, also an original Ready Commissioner, I'm proud to say as well. I would say belonging. So that would be my word. I think it's a good sense of belonging, certainly in the different places that you place yourselves.
Very good, thank you.
Good morning, everyone, I'm, excuse me, Lyman Leiter, not an original Ready Commissioner, but been on the commission for several years. The word that I think of is mosaic.
Interesting. Mind maybe expand on that for a second or two? Fantastic.
You said one word.
I know, I appreciate that. Facilitator's prerogative, changing the rules as we go.
I look around the community, and I see the beauty of the diversity, the beauty of the way the city is, and that plays out in terms of vibe and belonging and all of that, so that's why I picked mosaic.
All right, thank you.
Good morning, Adam Evantov, not an original member, but there in spirit, of the Ready Commission. I'm thinking either forward-thinking with a hyphen, or anticipatory.
Participatory?
No, anticipatory. Either one.
All right, very good, thank you. Please, go ahead, yeah.
Sorry, push. I'm Stacia Deutsch, also Next Gen, and Gen X, I don't know, whatever. And my word is evolving.
Great, thank you.
So you want to go council?
Yeah, we'll bypass that.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry, Randy. So I am councilmember Zach Schwenk, not an original councilmember. Do you want the raw, Zach, or do you want the? Yeah, no, I'm going to hold my raw thoughts for a while, because I think that's more than one word. For me, like, I always think of friendships. I think the friendships that I've made here have just been life-changing, and I think that's like core to, you know, individually who we are here is the friendships that we make.
Good, thank you.
All right, Jessica Alexander, Mayor Pro Tem. My one word would be family.
Very good, thank you. Mayor?
Good morning, Mayor Brendan Kelfus, original 2025 mayor. My word was mosaic, but Lyman stole it. Just kidding, my one word would be home.
Very good, thank you.
Matt Run, city councilmember, just going to use home, but off the table.
Well, I too was going to say home or hometown, but I would say, well, three words. Cruising Old Town is something I love to do here. That's what I think of, cruising, absolutely.
All right, cruising, we'll take that.
Yeah, right. Can I change my word? She just reminded me of my word.
I don't have an eraser.
Hallmarkian.
Hallmarkian.
Temecula's always felt like a hallmark town to me.
Yeah, that's very unique, yeah. And in fairness to those of you on the second half, you have to get, a lot of great ones are taken, so you have to go dig deep, so we appreciate that, so, please. Oh, Erica, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Erica, yeah.
Ernie Castro, Community Services Commission, not an original Ready Member.
My word is pride. I think people take a lot of pride in Temecula.
Great. Please, go ahead, yes.
And I'm LaSalle DeGrave. I'm not an original of any commissions. I think I'm the most junior commissioner here, actually. Can, maybe this is, we're gonna make it one word. Big, small town. We have big offerings, but it still feels like a small town.
Yeah. All hyphenated, right. A little more flexibility for folks.
It's all one word, it's all one word.
Go ahead, please.
Yuen Hogs, and I'm serving the second term on the Community Services Commission. And my word with a hyphen, family, fun.
Oh, interesting, okay. All right, please.
Jeff Kingsburg, not an original member of this 35-year Community Services Commission, yet I am an original resident and I was here before cityhood. My word, when I think of Temecula, that came to mind was diamond. And the reason for that is Temecula is a city of rare and exceptional quality.
Good morning, I am Kathy Sizemore, Community Services Commission, and I am an original. I'm just an original. My word for Temecula, well now, I'm glad to say my word didn't get taken. My word is passionate. We are a passionate group of people here in Temecula, whether we're passionate about our beliefs, the causes and organizations we support, our wine, our hobbies, whether it's cruising or whether it's hiking one of our trails. We are a passionate community.
Very good, thank you all. You know, it's, and, you know, no small thing that many of you referenced, oh, mine was picked, mine was, you know, taken, you know? Like, there's, right, a lot of sense of shared sense of appreciation of the true value and uniqueness of your community. So hopefully that, yeah, gives you a positive sense there. All right, so moving into this conversation a little bit more specifically with you, just to review kind of a few thoughts, reflecting on some of the, how we've set the stage for the conversation today, I guess, around kind of expectations and things we're hoping to hear from you. But I think particularly while it's this joint among three bodies officially, right? Two commissions and the council, of course. Although I know the city council is very interested in you as commissioners in particular, really hearing about your experiences, your perspectives, about what it means to, to serve, of course, right? But also on some of the, kind of the considerations of logistics, as shown by the homework questions, right, that we asked you to think about. It's really kind of unpacking and thinking about, you know, what it all, what it kind of collectively means from practical purposes, but also from, if not more importantly, the sense of value and contributions to city life, to city governance, and all those aspects overall. So, so really looking for just kind of general direction on all those questions overall. And I'm certainly, as facilitator, I'm not here to facilitate kind of consensus, you know, agreement on specific answers or things like that. It's really just to continue to unpack. And I think as you all experience as commissioners and your deliberations, definitely want to hear different perspectives overall. So one of you may have a feel, strong feeling that, you know, the answer to this question is really this, it's really about ABC, right? And another one of you may be like, "Oh, it's really more XYZ," right? And that's perfectly fine. We certainly want to hear all those perspectives. That's really a key part of what today is about. So just want to encourage that overall. And just essentially that, going along those lines, there's no kind of right or wrong answers, if you will, to these considerations. Really here to spur facilitation and consideration, discussion, I should say, overall, and give things to help inform future considerations for future commissions, advisory groups, task force, as Randy said, kind of that big bubble of what advisory groups can and should do for the city overall. So, good. So I think along those lines, let's continue here. Excuse me one second, let me get my, I've got all my, I've got my clicker here. I've got, got the notes. Okay, so overall, I know you can't read this, I know. So overall, but this is just a snapshot of the, the questions that you had in advance. So just to give you a sense, I do generally plan to kind of go through them in order. I might take a little liberty and jump between one to the other as we go. But just as a framing overall, again, thinking from the core about the purpose of our commissions, our advisory groups, what segments of the community might feel underrepresented still today here in Temecula that we might want to think about, if not today, if further out in the future? Representation and structure, how we select them overall, the scope and the authority, the topics that they could advise on, administrative considerations, you know, that level ad hoc standing task force. And by the way, again, another good example, as we go throughout, if you have any kind of questions on some of those details, logistics staff are here to help answer and clarify any of those things as we go throughout the conversation. But again, accountability and impact, right? What are we looking for, expectation when it comes to reporting and making sure it's not symbolic or performative? The risks and benefits of creating or not creating a body, as the case may be overall. And sustainability and evolution. Again, what does ongoing engagement and relevance over time, what should that look like? You know, what happens when, potentially, when interest wanes, participation wanes? So those are, again, just kind of highlight for everybody in the room overall, where we, where we'd like to go with these questions. But, you know, I think most importantly here, and I also say too about these questions, definitely want to hear your specific thoughts on specific topics like this one. Is there a specific need or concern today that you want to make sure is put on the table for consideration moving forward? But also thinking more generally about, you know, how we should answer this question in the future, what should we be thinking about? So you might have, for example, maybe one of you feels like, "Well, I'm not sure that there's a specific need or concern today." But I do have thoughts about how we need to think about needs in the future. How do we, you know, go about the process of considering them? Does that make sense? So again, want to know specifically how you feel today about, you know, very directly, the needs are today, but also generally speaking, kind of from a process or procedural perspective overall. So, okay, all right, enough, I think I've done enough overview and context setting for all of you. Want to get into the conversation here overall. And I would say, I guess, well, like we said, we want to keep it relatively informal and I know it's tricky, I'll try to, you know, manage our traffic here, right, of hearing from everybody. So maybe give me a hand raise as we go throughout, if you want to make sure you'd like to be heard. And I'll continue to try and do my best to make sure I'm looking around. But I know we're all relatively informal enough, there's no offense taken if there's a, if I pick someone over somebody else first. So certainly didn't mean to go out of any order. But who'd like to kick things off for us here about specific needs or concerns that need to be addressed? Again, either today that you feel, or considerations about how those conversations happen in the future? Yeah, councilmember.
Okay, so if a new body is created, so that's, that's something I've been kind of mulling over. And there would have to be a real purpose for this body, you know? And, you know, obviously, a forward-facing purpose is really the job of these two commissions. So, so that would be something that if we did stand something up, I would want a forward-facing commission that dealt with issues that the, the city is dealing with. But, but again, I don't want to create something if there's not something to do. I don't want to create a commission that we have to create work for. There has to be a purpose and a, a general direction of where this commission or committee would, would be moving towards. So, and that's, and that's been the, the issue is we've kind of come to, come to a stall mode on literally both of these commissions as far as, you know, what do they do next? And so, you know, it seems like just busy work is being thrown at them. And I would rather see something where there's an actual meaningful reason why these commissioners exist. And, you know, based on social media, things have changed, you know? And before social media, it was important for people to be seen and, you know, now, everybody can see us anywhere, anytime. I mean, I'm very active on social media. I mean, anything that happens in the city gets reported by me on social media. So, so that, that's the other thing. It's like, okay, so what, what, what other things can this body do? And so, so that's, the purpose is, to me, the primary question we're gonna deal with today.
Okay.
What is the purpose?
Okay, excellent. Thoughts on, yeah, I'd love to come to commissioner, I'll come to Adam and then to Denise, please, Adam.
Oh, yes, please, microphone, thank you. Others will get into purpose and activities and such. My, my thought is method. How do we actually interact without violating the Brown Act? How do we interact so that the council, really, if they choose to create a new body of some sort, can easily take advantage of the knowledge that is either acquired or exists amongst its very talented members?
Good, so that there's a clear way of making sure communication.
I can't just shoot an email to the city council, I don't believe, without violating the Brown Act. So, and it could, and Randy could probably correct me on this, but... So how do we exchange information all around so that, you know, other than this type of a format?
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think what Adam is referring to is while he can go ahead and send an email to all five of you at any given time, only two of you can actually engage with him, is I believe what you were trying to, to say. It's the interaction piece that, that he's questioning.
Yeah, so interaction, yeah, what can interaction look like in the future with, you know, some sort of group with council? And making sure there's good information sharing happening overall. Thank you, Adam. Yes, Denise, thanks for waiting.
That's great that you clarified that, because I'm like, I just violated. So I agree with Stu, and we know you're always all out and about around town, and I love that. But whatever comes out of this, we need to make sure that it has direction, the purpose is there, and then also measurable. We need to be able to see that we are making an impact in what we are doing. Specific needs, we need to be that gap, whatever this commission, task force, whatever is formed. They need to know that we are the gap between the city council and our community, because a lot of people feel, "Well, I don't know if I can send them an email. I, I never see them out or I'm afraid to approach them." Our community should never feel like that, because we put them into office. We need to have that other medium, whoever, whatever comes out of this, so that they can feel like I can go to them, I can share what's going on. Another specific need to me is, like Faulkner said, they need to be involved in a community. We need to see more of them out and about town, because I know the ready commission is always boots on the ground and people see us and they share with us. And we're only limited to what we can do or what we can, you know, put into place. But we have that communication with all of the city council that we can share with them. And then some concerns that I have is that we need to be able to address some of the issues that may not make it to the city council meeting or that may not make it to our council members. There is a lot of talk around town, and when they see any of us out, we're the first face that they come and go, "This is what happened. Why aren't we doing something about this?" And I feel my concern is, all of those issues, the majority of them go unheard and they go unresolved, because they're not getting to the people that it needs to get to. And, just like the young lady stated, the issue that happened, we remember that issue and people were all over the social media. We want to stop that. We want to be able to say, "We've got that, we've heard about it, and we are addressing it here, because our city has no place for any behavior like that." And that would do a lot for people that are hearing that. Our city truly understands and they respect what we're doing.
Okay.
That's just a start.
Thank you, very much. Other thoughts on kind of purpose perspective? I'll come to Kathy and then to LaSalle, please.
Hi, thank you, Andy. You know, community services, we're not just parks and rec. We are all of human services, we are senior services, we are special events, we are inclusive services. There's a lot that's under community services. So when it comes to saying we don't have any work to do, I kind of go, hmm, all right. For a purpose for our commission, whatever the purpose is, we have to work together. I wouldn't say that there's no purpose for a community services-type commission. We just had a situation here where I came and I made a public comment about the proposal to charge for parking for the Fourth of July event. That was, that was the perfect type of thing that should have been brought to our community services. If there was a question on the, the quality of the resident experience and you wanted to address that issue, that would have been the perfect thing to utilize Community Services Commission for. So I think there is still a need for a commission that is addressing, you know, all those aspects. When, when residents have a problem with the parks, when they have, you know, problems with senior services, there should be some type of commission. Anything that affects the quality of life, we should be having a commission that can be that face, because our city council can't be everywhere. They need, you know, some, some extra hands and feet on the ground. But also, many hands make light work, more ideas, you know? What kind of ideas, if it had been brought to our commission, that, well, we have residents who are dissatisfied with the Fourth of July event and they don't want to go there? And if that had been brought to us, how many of ideas could we have brainstormed and come up with? We have a wealth of experience from people who have been here since the beginning, people who came in the 90s, the early 2000s. We have a lot of experience that we could have applied to that problem.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm gonna come to LaSalle and then back to Jeff and I'll come back over to this side of the room. So, LaSalle and then Jeff, please.
Sure, and just tying into what everyone's saying, one of the challenges or opportunities that I've seen being, again, one of the newer commissioners, when I first joined, I, there was a little bit of confusion as to what, what do I do? Because, well, it has been explained, these are advisory positions. They really are more ambassador roles. And I think perhaps that's because the original reasons why the two commissions were set up have been completed. There's this, there's a very vague area where there isn't really clear direction on what do we do other than show up to commission meetings, show up to events? Of course, we want to be engaged, we want to be good, we want to be good community members and serve well. But there really isn't an opportunity to provide advisory services to the city council. At least in my six months being here, I haven't seen that opportunity. So I think just clearly defining what are our roles and how do we serve so that we can complement what the city council and the city staff, what their goals are, and tie that into whether it's the quality, quality of life plan, future planning, and just kind of looking at what that looks like.
Good, so real specific roles, just some initial things I'm hearing when I come back. Kind of problem-solving oriented, being really clear about roles, thinking about how commissions can be kind of problem-solving oriented, right? As a space for, whether it's direction from council or vice, or two-way communication around some of these emerging new issues. And, but again, back at a higher level, kind of perhaps more quality of life focus, you know, and determining those areas. So, good. I think it's gonna come to Jeff and then I'm gonna work my way around.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I like what everyone has said and getting back to the central question here in conjunction with what some of the public comments mentioned, it's really about accessibility. It's about, you know, community accessibility to local government. And again, you guys have spoken to this before, you know, being up on the dais and, you know, the formal meeting, and, and again, the average resident probably feels intimidated in that environment, right? And percentage-wise, we don't get, you know, a huge turnout per se. So if we want to create something that improves accessibility, you know, again, you guys have spoken to this as well, face-to-face interaction, community forums, that would be positive. And I think from a community services perspective, I've gone back and looked at the stuff I was handed, like the Quality of Life Master Plan and the Community Services Master Plan, which was formed in 2020. It's quite a, quite a, quite a document. You know, we would have the ability to track progress on that if those elements were brought in, right, to a future body. And you could utilize some of the tools that were used to create these documents, you know, such as needs assessments, focus groups, surveys, workshops. They could be done on a much smaller scale. I realize there's an investment there. I know one of the concerns is investment of time and, and money. But the bottom line is to move forward, since we get direction from councils, since these boards and commissions get direction from councils, as the city clerk outlined, it's gonna be paramount that the city council, you know, is willing to formally engage with this group and invest in this group. And perhaps, you know, again, if, if, it's, I don't want to use the term babysit, but I guess I have somebody to use, that you guys have a lot to do. And I know sometimes it's easier to do things on your own, as a leader. It's easier to do things on your own than to try to assign them to someone else and wait for that to get done and then and wait for that to get done, and then come back to you and elongate the process. But I would think that this body is either going to need a lot of engagement and support, or they're going to need some autonomy and some rope, a combination of the two.
Very good, appreciate that. I'm going to work down this side of the room here, and then we'll move on to our next question, but Sasha, please.
So for those who don't know, the Ready Commission has been providing the proclamations instead of at the city council level. That means all the diversity days from Women's History Month, Black History Month, Pride. We've been covering those, and it's my concern, I understand that maybe there is a plan for what happens to that, but without Ready, the concern would be that those proclamations and those diversity days would, in essence, disappear. So I'd like to make sure that whatever the new body is, is aware that those are super important to our community, that they give people a voice. We've been inviting kids from the schools and their advisors to come and do those, and it's been an incredible opportunity. I think perhaps one of the most important ones that we cover is Pride, which allows the LGBTQ plus community a voice in our city and where we're at, so.
So it's a part of kind of extending the community's voice, very good. I think Lyman, you wanted to.
Yeah, thank you, I agree with many of the comments that have been shared already. I think, I just am reflecting too, and when I came to Temecula now four years ago from the East Coast, and having been involved in work for decades on social services and equity based issues, I was amazed that Temecula had stood up the Ready Commission. I was like, wow, look at Temecula, go ahead. What I would say is that the reasons for standing up the Ready Commission, I wasn't here when it happened, but as I understand it, it was during 2020, and lots of the civil unrest going on across the country. The underlying issues related to that have not gone away. It's more quiet now than it was in 2020. But when it's quiet is when we should be really thinking about how to be strategic and thoughtful around addressing some of those underlying issues. So whatever structure is created by the council, and I do absolutely agree, form follows function. So get clear about the function and the purpose first, and then talk about form, because I've heard other ideas out there, let's figure out what the function is. But I want to invite us to consider that racism has not gone away, othering of LGBTQ plus communities has not gone away, poverty related issues have not gone away, immigration issues clearly have not gone away. And these are all things that impact our fellow residents in Temecula. And so we need to think comprehensively around what the the future of the commission structure or how the council uses community or has community to help inform, be strategic, be thought partners, and absolutely creates a mechanism that allows the community to be engaged, to be completely engaged in informing the council's decisions. So it's been a great honor to serve on the Ready Commission, and I thank the council for trusting me with this, with this position and in this space. And I just think that that's, you know, let's get real about what the the function is going forward.
Thank you for that. Last, yeah, Crystal, please.
Much like Lyman and everyone else, I definitely agree. I want to take a second, though, and thank our public speakers because for you to come out this morning and speak on behalf of Ready really shows the need that diversity is still something, and equity is still something at the forefront of our community, and it needs to have a front seat. And that's really important, so I want to thank you for that. There's a couple of comments that that really struck me. And if we go back to some of those pieces, Stu, I really appreciate what you said because I do believe that the purpose, it needs to be meaningful, right? It needs to be forward facing, it needs to be all those things. But then, as I'm hearing what you're saying, the question starts to come up, and I agree with Jeff on this, is, when did we lose purpose? And where did that direction get missed? And if we go back to what our city clerk has put out there for us, then that work plan and that design comes from the council. And without, you know, saying that there was a failure here at some point. And and I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean that from a place that we can grow from and learn from and develop, but what happened? We aren't sunsetted yet, and yet today I feel like we don't have the purpose and direction to get us even through the year. You know, so that that's another piece, that's another conversation to have, to be honest. And that should create the foundation for whatever is going to be developed moving forward. And so I do think that everything there needs to be very carefully looked at, very comprehensively looked at. But to LaSalle's point, she's been here six months, and she's like, well, we go to events, we show up. And that's not necessarily all there is to the roles that we have been appointed to. We have very meaningful roles, and to just be a body, I'm sorry that that is, I love that you feel that you were an ambassador because we all are, and I think that we really take that to meaningful, a meaningful place, but also I'm sorry because the role that we serve is so much greater than that. It is an advisory role, it is the eyes and the ears and the ability to provide that information to our council and to help direct our city to a better place. And it's not just, that's only a small piece of it. So I hope that what we come to start to build has meaning, has the purpose, but really, there needs to be a level of accountability as well that happens at the council level also. And to some degree, perhaps creating this workshop and lessening the number of commissions is a good thing because it does allow you to have that ability to be able to manage and to work in a stronger sense because your plates are full. And there is no doubt that the community needs you to address all of those issues. But whatever that is, it needs to have, whatever we're developing here needs to have a place where obviously, and I think that part is apparent in the last hour and 20 minutes that we've been here, a place where equity is at the table, diversity is at the table. And that's just something that, like I said, the last hour and 20 minutes, we've seen that. So I think that's the major place, but accountability from the council as well, and ensuring that there is clear and defined direction as well from the council in terms of what is being, what we're tasked with, but also what does that look like? What is the expectation of what that role is?
All right, thank you very much. Do we, anything else, Jack, before we move on? I'll, as you're speaking, I'll bring up the next question, but.
Absolutely, okay. In regards to purpose, we were formed by the city council, the Ready Commission I'm speaking of, obviously. We were formed by the city council, we were appointed by the city council to give our community a voice in regards to the needs that our community had, that the underserved had, that the people felt like their voices weren't being heard had. Those needs have not gone away. The purpose is to continue those needs of the people that feel like they're not being heard. Throughout this five year journey, I have heard from many, many people moving to Temecula, the same story as the lady shared. Is it safe for me to move? The fact that anybody would have to ask that question is huge. And I have heard it not just from the lady, from people, Denise and I are both in real estate. We hear it all the time, and that is very concerning, and it should be concerning to everybody in this room. So if that question is still being asked, that is a huge purpose. We should not take away those voices, those opportunities to speak at a commission. We have opened Pandora's Box. We opened it five years ago. We said, we now care about our underserved communities, we care about our minorities, we want to make sure that everybody feels included. We want to give proclamations to students. We give proclamations, they stand there in tears because they finally feel heard and seen in their community. We want to take that away. We hear from nonprofits that serve our community and are there to educate through coming to the Ready Commission. We want to take that away. Our purpose now is to continue the mission of having our unheard citizens to continue to be heard by our city, by our commissions, by our city council. So if we're not doing that, we're taking it away, and I don't want to take it away. And I understand, I understand that the city's doing what the city has to do, it has to evolve. I get all that, but again, we've opened Pandora's Box, and by taking it away, we're saying, we saw you, we heard you, we've moved on. And our our community is not ready to move on. They're here speaking today because they're not ready to move on.
Okay, thank you. I saw some hands, I kind of had a little focus on commissioners, I want to come back to council. I'll start, I'll make sure I check in with each of you, starting with a council member, Swank.
Okay, thank you. I really have appreciated the words so far, and I don't know if there'll be an opportunity later in the meeting for this, so I want to say these things now, that I genuinely appreciate the time and energy that you've all put into this. Having, being the only person up here that actually sat where you sat, I think I have a pretty good perspective about how you're feeling and the work that you do. To Commissioner Graves' point, when I was appointed in 2012, I had those same questions. It's not unique to this council. I think it was just fundamentally how interactions have been. What am I here, why am I, what am I doing? So, you know, that certainly resonated with me. I also want to take the time to apologize to each and every one of you for how this process played out. I think we did it wrong, and so I'll end up to that mistake. I think we screwed up. That's on us, right? Sometimes we think we know everything, or, hey, let's do this, you know, let's try something new. The community's evolving, let's figure it out. And we probably jumped the gun on this one a little too soon. So my sincere apologies, and I've spoken to some of you individually, obviously not everyone individually, but my sincere apologies for like how this has played out. Because, yeah, you're sitting here at this meeting that probably should have happened, you know, last year, right? And we could talk this through. And so my hope is not to take too much time because I genuinely just want to listen to you all. But I do want to chime in on some of the questions as well. When we talk about purpose, like, there's this sort of belief that it has to be like tangible, like you have to physically do something, but like, and it's mentioned in one of the later questions of like, you know, does this body just become symbolic or performative? Like, there's value in symbolic representation. Like, there's value in descriptive representation. If you look at the city council, the city council isn't a symbolic representation of the community. It's not a descriptive representation of the community, right? And so there is a ton of value in providing that. And if you look to our commissions, you get that. You can look to the commissions and you can see the entire community amongst our commissioners. And I think to the council's credit for when we appoint, we try to do that. But I think going forward, and it was mentioned by Commissioner Kingsburg about some autonomy, right? Because like, if you have a commission where city council holds all the authority, well, that's great for city council, but it really sort of holds commissions back in some respects. And I know we have to balance the elected side of things to the appointed side of things, and I understand that. But there really has to be some autonomy, some ability to not have to come to a council meeting and make a point and sway the council in that respect, right? Like, that was a great use of your role. Like, you came and you clearly, like, you took the time, you made a statement, and the council conversation direction took a completely different turn. So that's hard in some respects because as council, we're the electeds and sort of the buck stops here. So it's trying to balance that, like, our sort of like accountability to the community with the sort of like giving commissions a little more autonomy. Because again, when I came on as a commissioner, I was like, what the hell am I doing here? What are we supposed to do? I'm supposed to judge like a Christmas like contest? Like, that's not what I signed up for. And so that direction falls on us and really sort of laying the groundwork for what is the expectation? What should you be doing? Do we need to just give you more autonomy as commissions, just go do what you think is best for the community, and then somehow give us feedback, you know? And again, we all individually, you know, connect with certain commissioners, and I think that's great. So we all have kind of like our lane, which is good. But, you know, the community has evolved. I will push back a little bit on the social media side of things, like, everyone, every single person up here has a different algorithm. And so like, there isn't one unique algorithm for the whole city. So we need to be mindful of that as well, and the reality of like, we're all hearing different things online. My algorithm's different than your algorithm, and so we're all hearing different things. So there is still a ton of value of being in the community, connecting with students, connecting with residents, connecting with, you know, folks at events, like, having gone through COVID and the isolation, like, we need to be spending way more time with each other and talking to each other, and less time on our damn phones.
All right, thank you.
I'll stop there.
Thank you, appreciate it. And just to recap on kind of our format, definitely will, before we conclude today, we'll kind of have the remaining time, you know, the last portion focused on council. Speaking of roles, right, commissions versus council, council members kind of weighing in and collecting and responding and reflecting on everything, particularly you as a commissioner chair overall. So I want to make sure, I'm making sure we do that. But of course, anytime between now and then, council members, as you like to chime in and be part of the conversation, by all means. So to that end, similar to council member Swank, anyone else want to chime in for now? It's like your hand earlier.
Well, so to get to purpose, from my perspective, boards and commissions served a very unique, very specific purpose years ago. And somewhere along that path, those purposes kind of devolved into not a lot of clear direction. And it's 100% true, it comes from the council. Without our direction and input saying, this is your role, this is your responsibility, this is your task, you're left with, well, we just go to events and do proclamations, right? When the Ready Commission was formed, it had a specific purpose, it had a three year plan, and those plans were met, it went through its purpose. But there was no revisiting, right? And I equate it back to like even the Senior Master Plan, right? We talked about that during the budget hearings, and it's like, so we had this great Senior Master Plan, we got a lot of stuff done, we checked off a lot of boxes, but we never revisited it after 10 years to see, is there a new evolution to this that we need to acknowledge? And that's a perfect thing for the Ready Commission, the Community Services Commission to have engaged in, but we didn't give them the assignment, right? And so I think originally that was kind of what the council envisioned with a lot of these. That's why the Traffic Safety Commission and Community Services, they outlived their initial intent by many, many years because council kept coming up with new things. One of the other things that I'm very candid about is, you know, when when council historically would come across an item that was politically challenging, let's say, it was much easier for us to kick it to a commission because you're not an elected official, right? You could have a candid conversation and engage the community on stuff that, you know, really blows the doors open on an issue. And so we used to do that all the time and kick things down there to see, well, let's see what happens, you know, and then maybe bring it back to council. That doesn't happen anymore either. And I think just somewhere along the way, as everybody, you know, and there's been turnover on the council, there's been some change in the city, commissioners have changed over the years. We've lost a bit of that institutional knowledge, the historic perspective of why all of this exists. And I heard a couple of things. One was the speaker who said, you know, we're a community that wants to be a community. I love that phrase, I wrote it down, I was like, that's exactly right. We're a community that wants to be a community, and that's what these commissions do. It's different from planning, it's different from old town local, you know, review board, whatever we call it, OTLAC today. You know, it's different from traffic safety, right? It was community forward, community facing, because there's a lot of people who have some very strong opinions about what Temecula wants to be. And I'll just say that city council meetings, they are, and I will repeat this over and over again, a business meeting of a municipal corporation. And it is as boring as that sounds, right? I mean, we're talking about streetlights and budgets and potholes and, you know, all sorts of other stuff. And it's a horrible forum to have that sort of town hall workshop, community engagement kind of feel. People will come up and have those conversations, and they get their three minutes to say whatever's not on the agenda that's, you know, speaks to their heart or an issue that they're concerned about. But we can't engage, we don't do anything there and then to address those issues. And so we miss out on that opportunity, and 100%, a lot of folks just simply won't come to those meetings or are intimidated to come to those meetings. And so these other opportunities, you know, gave us a different kind of perspective and a different kind of voice. And our representation is imperfect. I mean, we have to acknowledge that, even with the diversity of ideas and thoughts and folks that are representing, you know, our current boards and commissions, it's imperfect. There are folks who are just simply not represented at the table. And, you know, a community that wants to be a community, well, how do we accomplish that? And it's certainly not by disengaging. And I think there was a lot of conversation, a lot of concern that, you know, what council is trying to do is, you know, well, we're disbanding all these boards and commissions and disengaging from the community. That's not my intent at all. I'd like to see, you know, this evolve, and, you know, somebody used the word evolving. Yeah, Temecula is evolving. Yeah, Temecula is evolving, and we can either become stagnant and, and, you know, let the boards and commissions, you know, devolve into nothingness, or I think, you know, and I'll disagree a little bit with Councilmember Schwank. I think, yeah, the process didn't play out as, as friendly as it could have, but I think it was good to just kind of rip the Band-Aid off and say, okay, so what are we doing here? You know, why do these things exist? And what does this next iteration look like? And I think that's, that's what we have to try and work through today is, is trying to figure that out and provide some really clear direction on, on what that next generation looks like.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate that. Yeah, I guess just reflecting here on questions, I think Mayor Protem, you're okay for now? Okay.
I'll talk my one year right.
Okay. No, please, I was going to sum up and move on to the next one, but if you wanted to talk specifically to purpose, please.
All righty. Thank you very much, sorry, appreciate it. I'll keep it short because I just want to say thank you again. I think all of us are very appreciative of your guys' time. We know you all have families, you all work, you do things within our community, and we all see that your compassion and your love for the community, the residents, the businesses is there. There is no doubt. And that's one of the things I love about all of you and this community. You know, looking at direct purpose, as I'm sitting here reading, you said if a body is created, and if I was to take a look at that, a new body, if I was to, very specific, would be a task force, you know? A task force, I believe, allows different representation, different viewpoints, and continuously can change ideas. So I think a lot of times we have the same people representing all the time. And one of the things that I would love to see is if we put a different task force, obviously it would have a sunset once the, the concern or the need is met. When another task force comes up or arises, we have a different body to look at different concerns, whether it be people who are underserved, whether it be different organizations and businesses that need to be listened to. So that's, that's kind of my area because I take a look at the five of us and we all are the people's commission. We all have a different viewpoint of things in different areas. You know, I take a look at myself and Councilmember Zach Schwank, that, you know, we've been working with the OTTA. All of us have different forums, whether with our districts, whatever that looks like, different meetings, whether with homeschooling parents, whether with businesses. As, as I was looking at Councilmember or Mayor Protem, Mayor's, sorry, I can't even get names, the Mayor's Facebook the other day or Instagram, you know, he's all over the businesses in Old Town. We're out there and we're definitely approachable, there's no doubt. And so I just want to encourage you guys, no matter where this leads today or in the future, we still need your voices, we're still the community, we're still Temecula. And that doesn't go away. And I need, we all need to be collective on that. And I think another area that we need to look at too is looking at how the community can support community, how the community is helping community. And so are we getting out and working with more nonprofits, maybe in some of these areas of concern, whether, whether they're, and people are coming into our, our neighborhoods in fear? Are we having communities that are, and nonprofits maybe that are stepping up and helping them to, to talk through those issues? When we have businesses come in, do we have community involvement? What does that look like as a body? So I'm just saying, can we do it even bigger, but not having to have a commission, if that makes sense? And so that's just my idea is it would be more oriented towards, towards a task force, it would have a sunset date on it, and create more ability for more individuals throughout our community to be involved rather than sometimes the same people all the time, so.
Good. So more spaces and opportunities to kind of expand those roles and space for everybody with some specific examples. Thank you for, you know, helping to give some more context to that overall. Good. Yeah, so Mayor, I'll come to you, and then I'm gonna, if I may, after we hear from the mayor, I'm gonna move us on to the next questions. And I think you've seen in the questions, there's a little bit of overlap, we'll touch back on some of the things you've talked about. So I think purpose is going to come up a lot. Please, Mayor, thank you.
Well, first, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll try to wrangle it all in and maybe this, you know, I know this is directed specifically at purpose, but this will probably touch on a few different other points and that could lead us into our next one. But again, I first, it's kind of like an opening statement, you know, it's an interesting format, but this feels like an opening statement at the same time. It seems like we all had our opening statements. I want to thank everyone, the commissioners on both commissions that are here today, the public speakers that came up and spoke, city staff that put a lot into this, and as well as my colleagues for looking into this, a very important issue. One thing I do want to state is, is the overarching feel that I feel coming into this, it's like, hey, you know, thank you very much for your service, we respect everything you've done, it feels like you're being fired. And I really don't like that. Just from my perspective, I don't like the, the thank you, you did great things, you had great purpose, you had great meeting, you no longer have meaning, you no longer have purpose. That's what it feels like saying it without saying it. And I don't like that. So I want to kind of steer away from that because I think your purpose and your meeting has not gone away, to be honest. And I feel like if there was a point in time when it felt like you didn't have a job to do, that is absolutely the fault of the council, who is the one that is supposed to give you problems to solve and give you issues for you to handle. So if you didn't have something, if you didn't have that self-generating agenda, it was up to the council to give you that. And if you didn't have something to do, that's on us, 100%. And I think to say that there's nothing to do in community services or with the Ready Commission anymore is just simply put, not true. And I think that we can do a better job up here at holding ourselves accountable to making that happen. I want to move on to a few of the public comments that started this off. And I agree with a lot of what, what was said at the public comments, you know, an hour and a half ago now. But one of them talked about, you know, the leadership and how we have to assign you work. And to reiterate what I just said, that is huge. We have to assign the commissioners' work, or of course, there's going to be no work for them to do. And I kind of have a hybrid between my two colleagues here where I agree with ripping the Band-Aid off and I also agree that we did it wrong. Because I think that, you know, similar to how we have public comments first and we hear what the public says and then we deliberate, I think that's what should have been done prior to this. I think that we should have heard from our commissions. Ironically, I think the result would be the same. I think we would still be here, but to get your input and to hear what you had to say prior to making the decision to just disband it, I think would have been the right path. I would have liked to have heard what you had to say prior to being here today. So I apologize, you know, on behalf of myself for that as well, you know? But when it, when initially came up, you know, when, when Councilmember Schwank made the motion to essentially re-envision our commissions, I was surprised but intrigued. I've talked about re-envisioning the commissions as I was running for council two and a half years ago. So when I heard it, I went, I've been talking about this for years, I, I love that idea. But it surprised me because I wasn't on here originally when the Ready Commission was enacted. Of course, I wasn't on here when the Community Services was originally enacted. So I couldn't say that with 2020 hindsight, would I have been for it against it at the time? But some of my colleagues were here when those were initially acted, so they knew the purpose and the meaning behind them. So the re-envisioning aspect was intriguing to me. But I wish we would have heard you out before rather than just go and shooting and then aiming. So I apologize as well on behalf of myself for that. But I think there, there has been for years recurring concerns on what was going to happen to the Ready Commission. You know, when I was running and still the talk today is what was going to happen with the Ready Commission? And now here we are, and the optics are, are that we have disbanded the Ready Commission. And that's not only the optics, that is reality, right? We've disbanded the Ready Commission, we've disbanded the Community Services Commission. We've disbanded it, you know? And, and we can say, it's a re-envisioning, we're, we're, yes, it's a re-envisioning, but yes, we disbanded you, you know? And I'm very blunt in my talking, but I, I hope that, you know, I'm coming from a place of empathy, and I don't like the way this has all panned out, to be quite honest. And I want to make sure that the concerns and your voices are still heard today. I think that's important to not only sit up here and, and have this, you know, the whiteboard and, and go through this without actually acknowledging what you've said and the voices that have spoken today, and then go on a complete 180 and doing something that the community doesn't agree with. Because I think this is a perfect example of, of what the purpose and the meaning behind commissions is. You are supposed to advise the council on issues that we may not hear. You are the gap in between us and the community. And absolutely, I agree with Mayor Protem, I would agree, we are the people's commission, but the reality of it is, is that people may not feel comfortable talking to the mayor, the Mayor Protem, or the city council. That is just the way it is. We're, we're placed on a pedestal and there's a gap. The, the, the public will just not always come to us to tell us the blunt reality of issues that our city is facing. So I think it's important that we do have a standing commission still, a forward-facing commission. And we can get into the specifics of what that looks like, but overall, and luckily for me, prior to me coming on council, we had the Quality of Life Master Plan. And that has very distinct purposes, very distinct core values, and I truly hope at the end of this, that that standing commission follows those seven core values. And they implement all of those core values into everything that we do here at the city level. And I just want to pull up, you know, real quick, the purpose of the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission, because in order to change or evolve, we have to go back in time to see why they were implemented in the first place, see what has changed, and see what their current purpose and meanings are. Because we've heard a lot about, you know, the, the purpose has gone away, the meaning has gone away of these commissions. And it's like, okay, is that true or is that false? Let's look at the reality of things. And if you read the purpose of both the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission, there are things in here that will never go away. So to have a, a non-standing commission, to me, it just doesn't, it doesn't work for me. And I'll read a few of these because it's going to be long, but it goes off the purpose of this commission that I hope comes to fruition. And Community Services, for example, is review and make recommendations to the city council regarding the parks and recreational facilities component of the space conservation element of the general plan. Make recommendations to the Temecula Community Service Department regarding community service facilities, programs, events, activities, and services. Those will never go away. Collaborate with community partners, including the TVUSD, community groups, nonprofits, to identify opportunities to enhance community services, programs, events, and services. Those will never go away. And I could argue most importantly, serve as ambassadors to educate the community about the city's community services, facilities, programs, and services. Those will never go away. In regards to the Ready Commission, build strong relationships around issues of diversity, inclusion, and equity within the city council, commission, staff, and community. Learn about existing city events, services, programs, and identify opportunities for further diversity, inclusion within the same. Serve as ambassadors to educate the community about opportunities related to diversity, inclusion, city events, services, programs. All of these things will never go away. So the purpose of the commission will always be there. We, as a council and as a body up here, just have to give you specific tasks, and there will always be specific tasks related to these, these purposes. And in my mind, it is, again, it is on us to give you specific tasks that will never go away in the city.
Very good.
It won't be a short-term task force, this is a lifelong commission in my mind, but I, I love the evolving our commissions with the community. I absolutely believe this is where we would have had landed, and I'm glad we are here, even though, you know, I was surprised at the initial want to evolve and, but I love that, that's what we're here for. We're here to embrace the community, we're here to involve or evolve with the community. And we have to listen to our commissioners, who listen to the people, and we also listen to the people. But we need a commission to advise us on issues that we may not have heard.
Okay.
So I think overall, to bring it all back in, my hope for the purpose of this standing commission that I hope comes to fruition would to be a hybrid, to be a hybrid of the Community Services Commission and the Ready Commission, but instead of looking at it in eyes, you know, where it says through the Ready Commission, look at it through the eyes of the Quality of Life Master Plan, which includes all of the things that Community Services does, and which includes all the things that the Ready Commission does.
Okay.
And it could be an all-inclusive, purpose-driven, meaningful commission for years to come.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thanks to all of you. And I knew, you know, it's not a surprise, here we are, question one of eight, and it's, we've come this far, so, but part of my job, but importantly, I don't mean to be lighthearted about, too lighthearted about it, as we said, being formal, but it is at the core, right? About why we're here and as, as the mayor was hoping to sum up, you know, about really considering, you know, the purpose and realm, not just the, the details and logistics, but again, is represented by, I think, many things you've all talked about, supporting that forward-facing nature of the city and making sure we're, you're all continuing to, you know, proceed in that way as well, with clear direction and defined roles, ensuring there's access and engagement for community members beyond just coming to city council meetings and standing at the dais or reaching out directly to council members. So just reflecting a few of the things you've said and just that, that you've, some of you reflected that, you know, there's great value in commissions or, and task force similar groups being problem-solving oriented, you know, very task-specific, sometimes it's hyper, very niche, sometimes it's been broader. It can, can continue to be that way. But there's a range of topics, again, that are still relevant to, to many of you, but it's really a space to engage overall as well. And, and a lot of interesting thinking here about how those key quality of life areas define the priorities in the city, as well as, you know, how, you know, future commissions, one or more commissions, task forces, however they're, you know, developed, may address those overall. So, so good. So thank you for kicking this off, and let's, let's move on and talk more about community support. And I'll ask you all to, you know, be thoughtful here about, you know, really kind of specific thoughts, very kind of targeted recommendations you might have on any of these questions overall, but, but what are the segments of the community that you feel are underrepresented and, you know, which stakeholders kind of share that need for engagement overall? Some of you have already touched on, you know, with an equity lens, the continued importance in the, from that perspective as well, for example. But are there any specific groups, anyone who would like to highlight overall in general, either at a high level or, or more specific overall? And what might that, what do you think some of the driving those needs are for those community groups? So I'll say, yeah, please.
Just a quick comment and I'll get out of the way. I just, I struggled with this question because I feel like, I mean, it can be answered, but I also feel like there's limitations. I mean, we all bring our own identity, we all bring our own life experiences, we can utilize our own observations. I watched one of the more recent Ready meetings, I mean, it was the LBGQ proclamation, and just watching from home, I could get a sense that that, people at that meeting felt, had felt underrepresented and wanted to be there. But I, I think it's very challenging, we can try, but it's very challenging to change people's feelings, you know, and make people feel better. It's hard, hard to put that on our shoulders. I get it, I understand the need to at least try. And then finally, as far as participation goes, I'm going to be a little biased here now that I'm officially a senior. You know, one thing about seniors, we, we have more time the most and, and we're, we're also, you know, a lot of seniors are willing to share their voice. That, and I know Councilman Ron had spoken to the senior plan a few meetings back as part of this discussion. That would be a group that I think would be likely to be able to find participants.
As somebody else who's looking at senior citizen years coming up pretty quick, I can appreciate that. But in all seriousness too, I mean, I know you're a very young community as well, but, you know, the baby boomers, the senior citizens, that's one of our greatest, biggest, excuse me, biggest proportion, larger group, I think, right now in our broader populace overall. But, excuse me one second, Kathy, I want to come to Randy real quick.
Yeah, it's, I needed to, to go ahead and respond as a staffer on this and give a little bit of context of this question.
Thank you.
And so community support and stakeholders, so what we've been seeing over the last several years is that even at the commission meetings, the, there is no public attendance at these commission meetings. And even for Ready Commission, over the last couple of years, you know, the, the attendance has been declining. So what started out as, as spaces where there were a lot of folks that were there, whether they were from the, the community feeling underrepresented, or whether they were stakeholders that were attending the meetings in order to support the underrepresented, in both cases, those numbers have declined readily. And so what we're, what we're, what we're asking about here is if there was a new body that was formed, and if that purpose was clear, who is it specifically that you are looking to serve as far as through, through the work of that commission? And who else in the community is going to show up to support that work and help out? I hope that helps with the explanation, Jeff, and so from the context perspective. So any thoughts anybody has on that idea is welcome.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll come to Kathy and then I'll, I see some hands here, I'm going to work my way around, please.
Okay, and thank you for that explanation, Randy. I know when I first read it, I came back with going, how do I choose which segment of our city is worthy of being represented? I mean, every resident should be represented, whether it's by council or a commission. But to kind of further go on what Jeff was saying, you know, I, I've been in the city since 97. I've raised my, you know, I came here as a newlywed, raised a family here, and it really felt like it was a city geared towards families. Yes, our median age is 38. We are still a family-focused city. But as we've evolved, we've gone from, you know, just having small, young families here to now we have empty nesters, we have young adults, we have a senior community that we do need to continue being mindful that, that we have that representation for them and representation even into having the services and the activities and looking at new opportunities to create services to cater to this now-evolving age group that we have in our city.
Very, thank you. Want to, let's see, I think, yeah, please, Ernest.
Yeah, so I want to kind of follow up. I think if there's a new committee or commission or task force set up, I think the Brown Act formal conferencing is not going to get to the people that are going to give you input. And I'm going to use an example. I think one of the most powerful things the city provides is summer classes and camps and things like that, because a lot of families here in the community have nothing to do with their kids for the summer, and they need something to do. But when I talk to people in the community about it, they know it exists, they see the book, but I don't feel there's any way for them to provide input on how to make it better or what can we do. All they know is they got to be online at a certain time and start hitting the button so they can get in because they're so popular. And I don't think setting up another forward-facing committee is going to get input from those people. They're too busy. You have to go out and talk to them. So I think another group that just sits at a dais in their conference room isn't going to, isn't going to reach out to anybody.
So your perspective here is, you know, certainly, there's many different segments of our community, starting to touch on a few examples here. But whether that may be, Ernest, we have to kind of be thoughtful about not even only expecting them to come to a commission meeting, but also, we need to continue to think about how we're getting out and finding them, if you will, and connecting, meeting them where they are.
How do you talk to those people? Yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's surveys, or if it's town hall meetings, or something more informal, but what we're doing isn't working as far as reaching. And that's probably one of our core consistent constituencies is the families, and how do you get to them? And if they have four kids and soccer and this and that, that they're not coming to a formal meeting to talk about it.
Right, so that families that's at the soccer field almost all day every Saturday, maybe we should be out there with a survey connecting with them at halftime between their matches, things like that, I guess. Oh, quickly, quick reflection, Kathy?
Yes, you know, talking about underrepresented, a group of people in our community that I've long stood up for is underrepresented as the spouse of a husband that commuted for 35 years to San Diego. I feel that, you know, when we talk sometimes, well, people aren't coming to the meetings. Well, how many of them are sitting on the 15 freeway at 6:00 PM trying to just get home to their families? So there was a long time where my husband couldn't be engaged with anything because he was on the 15 freeway. So I think we still need to continue being mindful of our commuters that are, that are, you know, not able to come to some of our events, such as our meetings here, to voice their opinion.
Right, so part of the small, you know, challenge of being a very dynamic, active city, busy city, is that there's many things to engage in. At the same time, it's hard to be engaged in everything, right? Certainly, and when it comes to engagement at this level, we know we have to kind of redouble, so. Good, I wanted to, I think I was going to work my way, do you mind if I, let me, if I could, with commissioners, and I'll come back to the council dais as it is. Thoughts here on this side of the room, if you may? Crystal, do you want to kick things, or Denise, did you?
Thank you, Madam President. So I would like to add that for our business owners, small business owners, those are some that I see, because I hear a lot of concerns from them. We don't feel we have a voice. We don't even know about coming to the city council meeting just to share what's going on, what they're seeing in their community as far as their businesses, how they're being treated, the support from the city and all that. So I would have to say, our small business owners.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So I just kind of wanted to maybe make a comment a little bit, or certainly kind of empower us to think a little bit differently in terms of this. So in education, we're always thinking about multiple means of engagement and how we're going to do that. And that doesn't look standard, right? And so how we have to get out of our box in order to create, you know, understand what it is that we're doing? How are we engaging with students, with our public? And then how are we measuring that? And to Randy's, you know, thought process of what she was talking about, absolutely our, like, you know, the people who have been coming to our meetings has dwindled significantly over the last few years. And we've seen that, certainly, I remember sitting in a room, and Councilmember Schwenk was there, and we're like, no one's here. He was the only person, which I'm glad you were there, thank you. But nobody was there. However, if we're looking at this, then, then is that the only means of measurement that we're using? And I think that we need to think about, there's got to be other ways that we can measure whether or not we're being successful in terms of our engagement with the community. It can't just be, did you make it to this meeting? Because like Commissioner Seismore said, you might be sitting on the 15 freeway and you couldn't. That doesn't mean they're not necessarily engaged, per se, or participatory, perhaps are going to go home and watch that and really care about what's happening and be at the next event. But how, again, are we measuring that? So I think we need to start looking at what other instruments of measurement we can use in order to gain a better understanding if we're reaching our community and public. So that's a real thing for me.
Okay, very good. Lyman.
I think this question for me is one that risks conflation, conflation of purpose and process. And listening to my fellow commissioners, I agree that it's been a struggle to understand why people don't come to our meetings. We meet the second Thursday of every month at 6 o'clock. Everybody should know that, right? But is that the right question? I would say that purpose is very clear from my perspective, and I said it earlier, right, that there are still marginalized populations in our community, and we need space for that. We need to figure out what the space is. So is it a question of purpose or process? And is it the process that is getting in the way of participation? So do we need to be more flexible? And I think I'm following Crystal's comments, too, that, you know, can we be more creative in how we connect with community? I actually love meeting in this room, right? And it's much more conducive to interaction and connection with community. But I also think we need to diversify how we engage with community. Do we meet on some Saturdays? Do we have different kinds of structures that foster better engagement? And are we asking the community?
Okay.
Same questions.
Very good, thank you. Any other thoughts from this side of the room? We'll come back to the dais, yeah. Councilmember Schwenk, thoughts on this? Oh, I'm sorry, if you don't mind.
I'm so sorry. Sorry, I was thinking about what you were saying about involvement and engagement and what Jackie was saying about safety. And I think that over this last year, people aren't feeling safe. So when we had the Arab American Proclamation Day, I think people aren't showing up because they're not feeling safe. And Pride especially, if you've watched those videos from the last couple of years, it can get kind of dicey. And I think that in terms of our own dialogue and how we communicate with people, we need to really make whatever comes out of this into an incredibly safe space. And whether that's, like Lyman said, going to meet people where they're at, using our community center resources, which might be an amazing way to like move around the city. But even me, coming to the Jewish American Proclamation Day, I'm always like, okay, is there enough security this year? And I just want to make sure, because underrepresented populations often feel unsafe. And we need to really, really hone in on that and lean into it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Councilmember, oh, you know, I apologize. I'm not doing, like I said, I'm like trying to, I need eyes on the side to my head, too. I apologize. You've been waiting a long time, Juan, thank you.
Thank you. And I want to backtrack just a little bit. I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Schwenk and the mayor, that you acknowledge the process, and this is a learning process. And I've felt and I agree with one public speaker, too, that this is backward, and we should have this conversation beforehand. And I thank you for your candidness and your taking ownership for that. So I really appreciate it to address that. So can address the feelings, like my fellow commissioners said that also, sometimes it's hard, people have feelings, and appreciate you address that. And also, this is a forward-looking workshop. And I think for the representation, for people not showing up at meetings, from my perspective, we've had few participation last couple of meetings when we have specifics, when the public knows that what we are going to discuss. So that, again, is from the council or from the agenda, they saw it. And that's a topic they are passionate, they want to discuss, so they come to our meeting and to engage us. So look, going forward, that I would like to see an easier process for us to maybe put some items on the agenda so the public can know in advance, so they can engage with us. Also, it'll be another ways, it'll, how we can make it easier for us to bring the feedback, feedback back to the council member. I feel there is some lacking there.
Thank you.
Because I agree with a lot of the comments that for the public, probably it's easier for them to approach us than to approach the council member. And they see us more, so that is another area that we can bring back.
Thank you, thank you very much, and thanks for your patience on that. Lysel, and then I'll come to council for thoughts.
I just have a quick comment. Like some of my fellow commissioners, I struggled with this question also, because I thought, how am I, who am I to determine this is an underrepresented group in our community and that they deserve representation? And so I think the reality is it's impossible for us to be able to determine, okay, we're going to have one person from this group, we're going to have one person, and that's what it's going to represent. And I think it's more looking at overarching, unifying topics that can be hindrances from people being involved in a commission, in a future commission, or just in what the city's doing, like Kathy mentioned, the commuters. When you look at populations like that, a commuter can represent different genders, different ideologies, but they all, but we all collectively, we're going to want to live in a place where we have community, and you want to know what's going on. And so kind of looking at those more unifying, you know, unifying themes that are going to kind of be able to touch on different, different groups, different ages, different, like I said, different genders. I think that's where we can really, I know we get into it a little bit in administrative considerations, but looking at what are opportunities? Is it something where we do more town hall-type engagement opportunities, maybe on not, you know, 3:00 in the afternoon? Or can we do something virtually so that we can involve people that may not be able to be at a meeting, like you said, you know, the second Thursday of every month? And looking for those opportunities where we can really try to bring in the community on, from different, you know, different viewpoints, different perspectives.
Very good, thank you for that. Councilmember, some thoughts here? If you don't mind, I'll go from left to right again, Councilmember Schwenk, and then we'll work down the line here.
Thank you. Yeah, so for this question, I just really want to focus on like the actively participate part of it, because that's what really like is the core of this. And I really appreciate some of the comments that I've heard, specifically Lyman's comments about like doing things differently. And that was some of my initial re-envisioning. If we could pan to the audience, you would see that most, everyone that was here is gone. They're bored out of their frickin' minds. They left. They're like, this is stupid, why am I sitting here? We've been sitting here for two hours, and we're talking about this stuff. And so they're kind of over it, right? So like, while I appreciate this space a lot more than the actual, you know, council chambers for like these things, like we're asking a lot to have people come here. There was a guy that I know that owns a business, he's going to go to work, you know, he can only stay here for an hour and a half forever. Like, I think we need to think about how we're strategically, not even, like, not only just messaging, like from a communications perspective, but having like a really solid, holistic, like, communication strategy top-down for the entire city, and that would feed down to commissions. But then, what are we doing on meetings? And then pushing out into the community, use TCSD, the events at TCSD? So I did, you know, when I was mayor, I did this like meet the mayor booth at the TCSD events, like, and it's a diverse group of events, so you get a diverse group of people. You get actually, like, it's very informal. It worked, I felt like it worked really well. I feel like we should leverage our events more. We should push into our community centers, host meetings there. Look, I've hosted HOA meetings where more people have attended an HOA meeting with myself than attend council meetings, than attend commission meetings. We're doing it wrong. We need to be out in the community more. Find ways to do that.
Meeting people where they are.
You have to meet people where they are. So I serve on RTA. When we talk about changing bus service, oh, we can send out a survey, yay, that's great. I was like, no, go stand at a bus stop and go talk to the people that are riding the bus and go, how is this service change going to affect you? We did that. We learned a ton of really good information from actually talking to people that are using the service. So go to summer day camp. Like, we should be doing those things, we should be pushing out. So if we stand something up, it needs to be out in the community.
Good.
And then, I'll just finish, I know, like, we've got through one and a half of these, like.
We're going to get there, all right.
I don't believe you, but we'll see. But the idea, too, is like, as council members, we, like, I've lived here for 25 years. I raised my three kids here. We also have a perspective, as commissioners do, so I value your perspective as well. But like, we all, I think, need to think about how we're interfacing with the community and do things differently than we've been doing them. Because what we're doing isn't working.
Very good, thank you. Mayor Patel?
All right, yes, sir. So one of the things I just wanted to highlight that the mayor had stated was specific tasks. And when we look at that as a, when we're looking at what individuals are not, or who is underrepresented, I think what we really need to look at as well is the fact how everything evolves over time. Whether we have new individuals coming in with our community, whether we have how expensive things are getting, it's going to change our community. And so the need is going to continuously change. So when we look at specific tasks, that's why I go right again to that task force, because we can meet the people where they're at with the specific needs that are needed. Example, previous council member Mike Nagar, his son had special needs. He was very informed and had seen the issues that, hey, we're lacking in this area as a council member and as a parent in our community. He was able to bring that up. I've had the opportunity to work with one of our leaders and residents who is part of the deaf community. And how do we, as council members in a community, make sure that those individuals are represented? So they are coming to us, and we are working with them continuously. And so I just want to make sure that we are constantly looking at the fact that it's not one group, it's going to constantly change, whether it be seniors. We just need to continue to make sure that we're meeting the needs continuously as a city. And I love what Councilmember Schwenk had said, and he just left, but the forward-facing to our community is huge. Same thing, HOA meetings, the last HOA meeting I was at in Los Ranchitos, Ron, I think I just saw you a few minutes ago somewhere, we must have had at least 50, 60 people there. Two hours of conversation was phenomenal. Gave me a perspective as a council member to be able to bring policy that would work for our community. And also, if we continuously get out more into the community, I keep hearing that we get put on this pedestal, or people are scared to come to us. Well, when we go out to the community and engage, they're going to not feel that there's a wall or an area that they cannot engage with us. We need to meet them where they're at. So I was very, I was very thankful for that, because it is true. And we do get out into the community. I just think all of us have different areas in the community that we engage with, because we have different groups. And that's what's so great about these councils, is because we all have different people that we engage with and can bring their ideas to the dais in itself. So that was my thought.
Councilmember Ron, anything you want to add before you move on for now?
The idea of folks not showing up to the meetings, you know, we struggle with that too at the council, right? And I've always equated it to one of several things that's happening in the community. One is, there's no issues. People are happy, they're satisfied, there's no reason to come to a council meeting. That's the more idyllic thought of what's happening, right? But we know that's not necessarily true. Sometimes people are just too busy, sometimes they're disinterested or disenfranchised. We talk about, you know, sort of this mistrust of government that occurs, you know. So there are a lot of barriers to folks attending a meeting and wanting to feel like they're engaged. The other thing is, maybe they're just so damn frustrated that they're just, they've thrown their hands up and say, well, that clearly isn't the place where I get solutions, right? So how do we know that, though? Like, how do we know which one of those things is the reason why people aren't showing up? We need to give folks a reason to engage. And trust me, we've seen it. When there's a reason, people show up. Man, do they show up. And somebody put on Passionate, I think, is one of the talking points? Hundred percent, right? But it shouldn't have to reach a fever pitch for us to have community engagement, right? And I think that's the disconnect. Now, I'll go back to purpose real quick here, because I know we need to move this along, because we only have limited time here. So purpose, what is the purpose? You know, I see us, I love the concept of, you know, talking about the Quality of Life Master Plan. We have spent a lot of time planning for this community and identifying those segments that are most important to us as a community. We have metrics for public safety. I always say, if you can't get that right, we have no business doing anything else. But we have metrics. We have crime statistics, we have FBI statistics, and safety rankings of cities around the United States. We have ISO ratings for fire, we have response times, we have all of those things that we[1782.32] we have all of those things that we can go back to and say, we are a safe community, or we are not a safe community. And we can track those trends. We aren't doing that with healthy communities, right? Why aren't we tracking the health of our community? Are the bike trails, are the hiking trails, are all of those things being used? You know, there's a great study done years ago with Lewis Homes actually showing how bike trails and accessibility actually lowered cholesterol rates and heart attack frequency. I mean, you know, fantastic, how, why aren't we doing that stuff to be able to track? And this goes across every issue, whether it's, you know, representation of minority communities, housing needs, commuting needs, special needs community, seniors, veterans, economically impacted, there are metrics for every one of those things. Smarter people than us have already put this stuff together, and communities are already tracking this. So why aren't we? I mean, you're looking for an organic agenda that self-populates every year for, you know, our commission that's, you know, that we're talking about here. It already exists, we just need to formalize it and say, here's all the things that we think are important, that we need an annual, you know, report on, or that we need some sort of touch point to the community to make sure that we are reaching out to the deaf community, that we are reaching out to the special needs community. We're meeting those needs and those wants. But if we're not, if we're not tracking it, if we don't formalize it, and if we just leave it up to this, you know, amorphous commission that's created, then we're right back where we were before. You know, so one of the things, hopefully at the end of this, is that we give staff clear direction and say, hey, here's the stuff I'd love to see you guys look at and bring forward, how do we formalize a commission around these issues that we have identified in our master planning? And, you know, and engage, we have 18 months of general plan that needs to be done. That's the foundational document of everything the city does. You know, we need good folks engaged in this. And I'll just end by saying, the task force idea, I know we've talked about it, I know we've had some very successful tasks, task forces as well, and I really do love the concept for those directed special concepts, right? But there is also value, I think, in just having more generalized involvement in the community as well. So, that's, that's what we've got.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Mayor?
I'll let Madam City Clerk say something.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, because I'm cognizant of time.
And I have a suggestion for that, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mayor, you had a thought to your mind, and then I'll talk, I'll take a pause point, and we'll talk about the rest of our time.
Yeah, perfect. No, I agree with basically everything Councilmember Ron said. And I think, just to answer this question very briefly, I think it is nearly impossible today to go through every community that feels underrepresented in our, in our city here. And I also think that we need to come to a foundation that active participation at any meeting, whether it's a community service meeting, a ready commission meeting, a city council meeting, it's just not there, and it will never be there, the way that business meetings are currently ran. So I think we need to change our thought process on how we measure community engagement, because it doesn't happen at the business hearings of the city. It just doesn't, it won't, the form is not designed that way. So like everyone's saying here, and I agree that commissioners and council members do, we go out in the community, and we bring the business items back to city hall and the council chambers. But the active participation, I don't know how to measure that. I don't think city council meetings is a good way to measure that, the attendance at meetings. It's just evolving, the world's evolving, our city's evolving, and we need to evolve with it. But at the end of the day, one thing that we cannot change is the business meeting format.
Yeah.
That's a legal thing that we have to complete.
Have to do that.
So, yes, we're going to be out in the community, yes, the commission or the task force would be out in the community, but it's difficult to measure active participation. But I would argue, obviously anecdotal and subjective, that Temecula has much more active participation in local politics than a lot of cities that surround us.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So there's no lack thereof, per se. Yeah, I appreciate that. So it's been, really, thank you all for these, it's almost not so much about who, but more a question of how, in some respects. Yes, we want to be thoughtful about who, and are we connecting with kind of our, you know, the, part of the beauty of your city growing is that you continue to have more diversity, you've touched on many different aspects of what representation means in terms of needs and such here, so. But a big part of it is a bit about how, and it sounds like a lot of interest around continuing to be more creative and innovative, and how that happens. Some of that happens today, I mean, you get good experience, but HOA meetings, great to, okay, I'm connecting with 50-plus people, and I'm not at council, so I know some council members are thoughtful about that. And, you know, as you, when new boards, commissions, task forces, what have you, are stood up, are there new formats for those bodies, potentially, that, maybe there's a formalized meeting as normal, maybe that's standard, but maybe there are other things, kind of change the role and the charge of those potential boards, task force, commission members, in terms of how, what engagement looks like, and what tools can be supporting future commissioners, task force members, and how to measure, how do we know, you know, we're getting good outreach, getting good engagement overall? So, so good, thank you, really rich discussion. I want to offer, as a pause point on the rest of our time, we are going to wrap by, I think at the, I know council members want to honor the time, of your time, particularly in thought of you as commissioners, you know, the time that you're donating and offering here. What I want to ask for our remaining questions, if okay with the council, if I can put you on the spot, I think what I'd like to ask, if we could go through each of them and hear from the commissioners, and focus on them kind of providing the feedback and the commentary, and of course, saving the latter part, our last portion of time, to come back to you as we plan to, to kind of talk about, again, some of your reflections on what you've heard, your further thoughts, and we're going to get to a point of kind of affirming how you want staff to go forward. I'm turning to the city clerk to make sure I'm not asking anything that's out of order here. Is that okay?
No, no, in fact, I think that's perfect, Andy, and I would just ask the commissioners, you know, as we go through each of the balance of these questions, I would ask, if you feel some sort of strong tie to that question, please offer a brief, a very brief statement in support of that, because we really do want to hear your thoughts on the balance of these questions. And then we're going to bring it back to council for kind of their concluding comments and direction. So far, as staff, I want to make it very clear what we are hearing the themes of, is there, there needs to be some sort of mechanism beyond the city council that is engaging with the community as a backstop to address certain issues that arise in the community. Now, whether or not that is standing, or task force, or whatever, there needs to be something. That something needs to have measurable, it needs to have a work plan, it needs to have tasks, it needs to have measurable results. And some of those things could be tied to the quality of life master plan, and the general update as well, general plan update. Every single topic that has been mentioned here today so far is somewhere in the quality of life master plan, or somewhere in the general plan, because we've just been noting it as we've been going. So, I just want to just, just set the stage while he's finishing taping the chart, they are great. So, if we can, again, commissioners, we're going to roll through these next questions. Andy, if we could read the question and see if there's a hand, and then we'll get this, we'll get this going.
Yes, thank you, I took the opportunity as, it's like, oh, Randy's going to speak, I'm going to change my paper, so. Meeting wasn't over with the paper ending, so I've got plenty more, so paper won't hold us up. But, in all seriousness, I appreciate that, and thank you, councilmember, for, you know, saving your time for kind of the latter part, and thanks to everybody for your flexibility here. So yeah, so representation and structure here, you know, to represent, we've just acknowledged that this isn't just about sitting at a dais in commissions, task force meetings, but broader ways to engage, but thoughts on what, you know, how members could be selected to ensure that representation? So you've been through, each of you as commissioners, you went through a selection process, so you have that experience, maybe you've seen others in other cities, or you're part of other groups, you've seen something, is there's anything kind of, anything you would reinforce that the city does do today to get people involved and appoint? Are there things you've seen other places that you'd encourage consideration for trying? Let me, if you don't mind, I'm going to start on this side of the room, and make sure I come here, we had her from Adam in a little bit, please, go ahead.
There's a lot of, a lot of criteria you can throw out there, but the one, number one, I think, is making sure that the candidate has the time, commitment, and ability to meet the needs and goals of either the commission, or whatever that shape is in the future. You're going to be there, are you going to be there in the community, are you going to do the job? It's the first question. And then, you know, looking beyond that, other people can mention criteria.
Okay, good, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, Lyman, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate an earlier comment I made, and that is that form follows function. So it's really hard for me to think about structure without being clear about purpose of the council's intent. So I would invite us to consider getting to the purpose first, and then talking about structure. I would recommend an at-large process for whatever happens. Recognize the constituency focus of our council members, you're elected by a certain constituency, and once elected, your constituency changes. I would invite you to consider that, your constituency broadens, and now you are representing the entire community. So I would be, that would be a recommendation specifically around how you form, whether it's a task force or a commission going forward.
Thank you for that. Denise, and then Jackie?
Yes, so I like the way that we initially did it, I think five years ago, we had to basically stand in front of a firing squad, I call it. I think when I interviewed, it was like 80 people, and I was number 80, so they were pretty much tired when I got there to speak. But I like that, that the interview process, because you get to know the individual. And I think the main thing is, make sure it's a diverse group, a representation of our city, because that's who we are. And then also, share with the individuals what your purpose, your direction, what your whole meaning behind forming whatever this comes out to be, so that in their mind, they're already thinking, okay, this is what my responsibility is, or this is what I'm going to be tasked to do. Just like the young lady, it was like six months, and you're like, okay, so, am I really doing what I was put here to do? And another thing, I love the in-person interviews, but we also need to look at individuals with boots on the ground, that are involved in a community that's doing things. And I know, I think I heard someone say, it's always the same people, and you know, that's how it always is. Seventy percent of the people doing the work, 30% are just sitting down. You want people that are out there, that are making things happen, or that are doing things, because you know that they're going to be great at whatever direction you give them to do, so.
Thank you. Yeah, Jackie, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree, I think as cumbersome as it can be to appoint people and go through that interview process, I think it's very effective. And I also think that our community isn't as much as we put the information out there, they're not aware that that is happening, because I hear it all the time. But we do have tons of organizations that are engaged, that can be made more aware of that process. So our nonprofits, our veteran groups, our interfaith council, organizations like that that are already engaged, at least try to be engaged with the city, that's a great avenue for us to look for future commissioners, or whatever that title is going to be. I think we should reach out to them and form that more.
Okay, good. Crystal, do you have thoughts you want to share? Okay, good, anything from you, Sage? Thank you. Coming over to this side.
And sir, just real quick, I think it's important for the council to hear, we hear, just in regards to this question, you know, the public process, the interview process, I think it's important for us to hear the commissioners' thoughts on how that appointment process goes in the future. Do they want a consensus of the council, do they want direct council appointments? Those are issues that we would currently deal with a task force or a commission. So just thoughts in your head when the next commission goes, do you think the current process is best, do you want to change it to direct council appointments, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, please, there you go, thank you for adding to that. And by the way, too, just another process point for this conversation, too, feel free, again, to use your notes forum, if you have expanded thoughts, you can submit to us that way. But I want to, respect coming over here, Kathy, and then I'll move down the line here, so.
Thank you, Mayor Calphus, that was exactly what I wanted to mention on mine, is, I think it's very important that we keep it the public process that it's been with an application and opening it to everybody, and that it's at-large with the whole council. My fear as a former, upcoming former commissioner, and a resident, is when it's, I apply to you, and I'm directly appointed to you, I don't want to, it shouldn't be that I just represent you. And my fear is that we could end up with a potential of having too many special interests represented in our commissioners. And I just look at, prior to me becoming a commissioner, it felt as a resident that these roles were kind of backroom deals, you know, the city council members put their friends in these positions. And I feel people like, I'm going to say myself and you on, who were housewives for many years, just raising our kids. So we weren't at your Rotary meetings, we weren't at your city, you know, council meetings, because we were at home, changing diapers. I feel if you go into something where you're just appointing without that public option, you have a potential for eliminating voices like ours that are still very important.
Good. Other thoughts here on the representation? Oh, I'll work down the line, thank you, Jeff.
I was a little surprised that this discussion was open-ended in terms of method of appointment, because I was going back to the previous meeting in April, and it felt like the council had moved in a direction to go to direct council appointment for at least the two remaining commissions. And if there's flexibility here, that's, that's great. I, I don't know if I have a clear opinion on that either way. Not to jump ahead, but I'm just going to say, as I thought, if something got formulated, my concept was kind of a two-year term, with a one-year, with a yearly focus, or focus area, that might involve three workshops, the first quarter could be used for planning, and then there could be a workshop or public forum of some kind in each of the next three quarters. I, I do feel like, you know, the public process is, you know, there's transparency there, and it's great. I also think we need to be somewhat cautious of the potential that people perceive there are many multiple hoops to jump through for something that could be essentially a volunteer position. You know, you may not get a ton of turnout. And, you know, at the risk of being perceived as self-serving, I, I know we want to keep things open and all that, but on the other hand, you also have, if, how many of these people are interested today? But you do have 11 people here that do have quite a bit institutional knowledge and experience. So if you're, to bring in some representatives from this group, obviously to kind of jumpstart this thing, might be in the council's best interest.
Okay, you on?
I agree that I like the process of being transparent. I think it's important for the public to know the selecting process, and for everybody to see who are being interviewed and who are being selected. And also, I want to bring up the term limits, I think it's also important that we put a term limit, so that once we are done, that somebody else can have an opportunity to get engaged and to be selected. So that way, we can continue as a community change, that we can continue to have that representation from our community.
Good, thank you. LaSalle, anything you want to add at this point?
I'm okay, everything I was going to share has already been shared.
Good, thank you, appreciate that, yeah. All right, same, okay, good, just to double check it.
And Andy, we can go ahead and skip the next question, the scope and authority, because we talked about some of those topics beforehand, and I think the general plan and the quality of life master plan that everybody kept bringing up, the scope and authority, you know, that could definitely be the overarching, because the question is, what specific topics could the body advise on? And that really is at the direction of the council, and that could be based in those two documents.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I'll take up, I'll offer my two cents to you, taking off facilitator hat, I mean, that is kind of in best practice, is really, you have these really robust guiding documents, the Q L M P is just fresh, hot off the press, if you will, in the context of the work you've all done as a community and staff, and then here diving into the general plan update, I mean, it doesn't get much more, you know, focused on those here, just offering my, if I, if you don't mind, as a planner, off of that is two, my two cents. But back to my, my role here, I appreciate that, Randy, thank you for moving us and affirming that, but what other tops of, we've talked about this a little bit, too, you know, with examples, well, task forces can be a little more flexible, be a little more responsive to emerging needs, for example, the Mayor Potem was leaning on that suggestion, for example. So, so more thoughts on kind of what these types of bodies could be if you have them, as they are? But what about staff, staff support being required, you know, any kind of reflections and thoughts, concerns or ideas about, you know, considerations, right, that may come into these different areas, so.
And sir, maybe to make this one quick, the commissioners can just say, ad hoc standing task force, very briefly, because the staffing, budget, meeting logistics, we can get into all that at a later time.
Yeah.
But I think it's important to know which one that you would prefer, which one you think was best, and just move on from there.
Yeah, any preference on a specific format, maybe a specific example? I think an ad hoc for this topic would be great for these reasons, maybe a quick elevator, not to rush you, but almost an elevator pitch, but LaSalle, what are your thoughts here about?
Sure, I love the idea of having the standing, the standing commission, but with the opportunity that if there is something of special interest to individuals within that commission, that they could form an ad hoc or a task force based on what those needs are.
Interesting, so maybe more of that. So maybe more of that.
But keeping in mind that these are, we are volunteers.
Yes. Loading up on all the subcommittees and task forces and ad hocs. Okay, good. Thoughts similar, yeah, Lyman?
Did I mention form follows function?
I don't think you said that. I didn't hear that.
I think there's value in multiple options, so it depends upon what we're trying to accomplish. I don't think it's binary, I don't think it's task or, or commission, or ad hoc. I think that there's space for all of those, and it's selecting the right form that is aligned with the function we're trying to accomplish.
Right. Very good. Other thoughts on, as I'm looking in this direction of the room, Jackie, do you have?
Just in the spirit of evolution, I think that it makes sense for the two commissions to kind of combine and to come up with a new name, cover all the topics they've already been covering. The community doesn't feel like it was abandoned, and the commissioners feel like they still have a purpose. I know that some commissioners are terming off, or they're, they're leaving anyway, so there's definitely going to be space for those two commissions to be able to combine.
Thank you. Yeah, so back to a kind of specific thoughts on, I think, you're not the first one to have mentioned it here in this forum today, that in the context of your two specific commissions, that, you know, a new kind of hybrid commission might be something the council to consider appointing moving forward, whether that's in the near or the longer term. So knowing the G-PAC will be kicking up, we anticipate the G-PAC will be a new commission moving forward soon, too. But Crystal?
To that end, and I think to both Jackie and to Lyman's comment, I would, I like what Lissel is saying, but also I do agree, form does something follows function here. And I think with that, with the general plan coming up, the timing of such is that, we have stated it already multiple times, that, and I just want to maybe pose this based on what Zach said earlier, and what our mayor has stated, too, in terms of what you did, and how this, this workshop came to be today. And I would just pose the fact that perhaps we're not necessarily premature, but we're in a planning phase in certain pieces, and with that G-PAC coming out, those, those are data markers that we absolutely need in order to drive this. And I know that that data is critical to what we're doing, and the date and the timing is such that we're, what, a year and change essentially away? And I would be looking at potentially creating phases to kind of what Jackie said, as we move forward, to put things and implement them in place, whether that be a standing or an ad hoc, however, what that looks like is at the direction clearly of the council. But we need those data markers before we determine what best fits this, what we're going to do. And that is, the timing is just such that if we are sorry, right, or apologetic, we have an opportunity here to correct those pieces and not be premature, but to have the forethought this time around to ensure that both of these groups, something really, really meaningful comes out of that.
Good.
That's pretty much my answer to all the questions.
Okay, good. Overarching, yeah. Good. Other thoughts, yes, Jeff, and then we're going to move on to the next question.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to be cautious of creating something in the mold of what we've been doing. We've got to kind of avoid that, that caution. That's why I kind of like, not to get ahead of ourselves, I like the concept of a two-year charter, where in the second year of that charter, the council would, would be scheduled for them to kind of review the commission or the body and see how it's going, and then if it's going well, they could renew it for, for two more years. And that's kind of why I'm biased toward a two-year term as well, because with more rotating, two-year terms, with more rotating topics and themes, as it evolves, more people could come in more frequently, as opposed to people staying and sitting on a three-year, a three or four-year term. And then as far as a yearly theme, under the idea of a yearly theme or focus, and the reference to the Q L M P, the healthy, livingable communities, you know, a theme of wellness, very broad theme, a lot can be done with that. I look at what gets done in community services, and I go through the whole community services plan, the community service book, it's all about wellness. It's all about being a healthy community, mentally, physically, socially, and engaging with others.
Good, very good. And, and, yes, please Kathy, and then I'll move on.
I just want to, Jeff, my concern on like a two-year thing is, you know, I'm ending in six years here as a commissioner, and, or five years, and we see government move slow. And it, it took me, I think, the first two years serving as a commissioner to really finally get everybody's name correct. So my fear would be that two years just would be too fast of a revolving door, that you wouldn't really get an opportunity to actually accomplish stuff.
Okay, yeah. So some balance, perhaps, if there's a theme that we want to, we want to be flexible and nimble, at the same time, a commissioner feeling like, gee, eighteen months in, I just feel established, but now my term is over in six more months. So there's, there's a balance there we want to think about, so.
How do you get effective?
Right. And there's been some good conversation on our next topic already, I want to circle back, though, and hear some more specific thoughts. Reporting requirements, for example, what do we need to do to make sure the body does not become symbolic or performant? There was some acknowledging, by the way, of symbolism, representation is, you know, there is value in that. But again, being, sense of production, each, I've, it sounds like many of you want to feel like, I'm coming to a meeting, I'm going to an event, and there's a very clear purpose to it, and we're, the community's getting something out of my representation being there, and we are getting information back as, as an extension of the city government to better understand. So what can that look like a little bit more, you know, kind of around, as we term it here, reporting requirements, what, but, yeah, Randy, want to?
Yeah, I want to provide some context for this before we get into some general comments. What we've heard from council members and commissioners is that the annual report method of communication may not be the most effective or efficient way to communicate and interact with one another. So however, we do need some sort of a, a method by which we can show the public on what, what that commission happened to be working on and accomplished during that year, and what they will be doing in the future. So what we'd really like to hear from the commission at this point is just some really quick, again, thirty seconds, about, does the annual reporting system work? If not, what else could we do?
And I'll add to that thing, we've heard a lot about metrics here, too. We've got a wealth of them, we're open to more. I'm going to dare offer that at least some of you would agree, some of those metrics could be the basis of how we think about organizing and reporting, so, but correct me if I'm overstating, but Kathy, please.
In response, yes, the, the annual reports, I think, I'll, I'll be honest, it feels more like a dog and pony in a dancing bear show, because I'm just presenting to you a report that staff has provided to me, and it's all stuff pretty much known already. And you just sit at the dais and you say, thank you very much. This, where we're actually talking, I think this is much more effective.
Okay, excellent. Other thoughts on, yeah, Adam, please, and then I'll.
If, if this future commission or task force or whatever is serving at the behest of the council, and they're trying to fill knowledge gaps, then report out. If there's an expectation that the commissioner or committee member is appointed, that they need to go to that meeting, that they show up to the meeting and then report out, short paragraph, doesn't have to be whatever. And then that can be forwarded, because that's the whole point, is to fill the knowledge gaps and serve on the behalf of the council. And if they can't do that, again, maybe it's time that there's a new body that can replace that person.
Yeah, it's kind of part, helps to further reflect the level of commitment and effort, you know.
At, at many chambers, board members are required to participate in a variety of things, committees, or going to events and things like that on behalf of the chamber. I don't think a commissioner, a committee member, or a task force member should be asked any less.
Okay, very good. And Jackie, thoughts on this?
I don't, again, I don't, I don't like the reporting at the end of the year. I think it's very formal, and it's just a lot of paperwork and a lot of talking, but I don't think anybody walks away from anything with it. But I do know that the last time we did this here in this room was about housing, and the dialogue between the commissioners and city council. I think it was beneficial for everybody, including our community, and I think it was very impactful.
So it's kind of joint sessions can be useful. Good. All right. Other thoughts on, yes, please, Denise and I'll work.
I like the idea of getting the information out to our community a little better. As Jackie said, when we had an event in here, and there was another meeting we had here, there was standing room only. I think when we put out to our communities, sort of like state of the commission, or something like that, let them know what we have accomplished, what our goals, our focus are, and what we're doing in our community to hear, to make them know, and let them know that they are being heard.
Yeah, it's kind of public notices, which can be a formal term, or just more compelling updates, right, to encourage.
I like that, compelling updates.
There you go.
Yeah, write that down.
We'll change, we're changing from city notices to city compelling, I'm just kidding. Please, Crystal.
I like this format also. This works really well. Part of it's that, that less formal piece, I think people come out to that, they respond well, and it gives us a chance to interact better. But I also would, would also suggest, too, as an annual update, not only is it a time to provide an update, but perhaps at that point, provide an annual initiative in terms of what does that looks like next steps throughout that year. So it kind of gives that forward thinking process as well, so that there's no, again, it's a dialogue, and it's, it's right there in the public, so I like this format a lot.
So kind of that forward planning, kind of agenda setting. Good, excellent. All right. Anything, yes, please Kathy, and then I'm going to introduce our next question.
I just want to say, you know, I've been a commissioner for community services since January twenty twenty-one, and I'm kind of jealous hearing ready commissioner over there going, oh, when we met here in this room this time with the city council, when we met with them this time. This is the first time since twenty twenty-one as a commissioner for community services that I've ever had an audience with the city council.
Okay, good. So some, some value from firsthand experience and some understanding that there's some appreciation from those who have not. So, okay, thank you. Appreciate, you on, and, and I'll ask you all to attend to our next question, too, and I'll come back to Lyman as well. Come on, please.
I like this format, but I think probably this is not practical for us to have monthly meeting. And I, we do have our monthly meeting, our commission meetings, and as a chair, also I go to council meetings monthly to report, and I would recommend that when we have our monthly meetings, or the future ones, that the commissioners can come up and, because of five, how many numbers, the commissioners can discuss and come up with some ideas or feedbacks, and when during the report time, instead of currently, we're reporting what the staff or the, presented to us, that we can report something that the commission discussed, that'll be something, actual feedback bring back to the council.
So a little more commissioner, but don't disrespect the staff reports, but a little more commissioner-driven.
Yes.
Okay, good, very good. Lyman, thanks for waiting. What were you, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest that we consider balancing process and outcomes.
Yeah.
And most of what we report on, and most of our things that we're reporting on are process, what we did, rather than what we accomplished, right? So how many meetings do we go to? How many events do we go to? What do we do this month? And I think that there's some space in this conversation for creating metrics aligned with the quality of life master plan, which I really like, that we can suggest that we're having an impact on, and really get to some outcome measures that we can report on and discuss.
Thank you. That's been growing practice, and your staff, executive staff will tell you, you know, that focusing more on reporting out on outcomes, what, all the work that we do as city staff, and, and you know, that council members lead and direct speaks to real change in a community. It can be hard to measure, but, but there, that continues to evolve, and yes, we do have metrics in the city to be able to do that, so. Quickly, I'm going to ask these kind of two questions in succession, because I know you have them. And again, these are things we have touched on briefly, kind of the risk factor for not kind of standing up groups. I think, I want to acknowledge, you've said, first and foremost, community voice, right? There's space and opportunity, it's a way to better connect with the community, whatever those formats are, as the commissions, as you had been, to other going out there and to engage. I want to acknowledge that, that's a, that's a major risk, that I think, I'll dare say we've heard from you. But other benefits, but then also that ongoing engagement and relevance over time. And again, I think you've talked about this, we talked about in the context of communication and engagement, and having formalized plans to be able to do that, whether it's commission-driven, maybe part of council direction to, to commissions, task forces, a little bit on the how, you know, and expectations about what that can be beyond convening a monthly meeting, so. So just wanted to add that, reflect on the context and the conversation we've had here. Is there anything else to kind of add beyond what we talked about? Adam?
Who's your audience? Are you, and what's your goal? Is your goal to fill up the audience so that you feel like you're, you're having an impact in the community, or is your goal to feed the city council information that they can use to be better city council members? So if, if it's the latter, then going to the assignments, doing the work, feeding it back, and then also you create a paper trail so that at the end of the year, for reporting, you have something to work with, you have a report, then it doesn't really matter if public participation, interest waxes and wanes depending on the topic, but the real work underneath it all continues. And again, we're serving at the behest of the city council, feeding them information. So interest is going to come and go a little bit from the public, but the need is still there from the council.
Yeah.
Can I, I'm going to butt in.
Sure, all right.
But, no, hundred percent, right there, you nailed it. I mean, you know, from my perspective, if you're not meeting and discussing and working on something that's relevant to the council and the city of Temecula, then there's no purpose in it. But if you're coming back at the end of one of your meetings and you're saying, hey, here's what you've missed on the special needs community, or here's what needs to happen with, you know, new community services programs, and it gives us the ability to, because honestly, like the, the, the topic of, you know, fees for the Fourth of July and all of that, 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 it's an interesting topic. We need to talk, have those conversations about community services, but it should have been held at a, at a commission level perhaps first, to say, okay, it's not just Fourth of July, it's every event. How do we come up with a global policy on this? And then you give us something to be able to work with, and kick back and say, you know what, these are some interesting thoughts, this is what the community's missing, this is where we get our marching orders. So yeah, if it's, if you're not doing that, then there's no purpose to what, you know, what you're accomplishing anymore.
Yep. So that's kind of forward planning and agenda setting, and I think, I've, I've heard here today, councils acknowledge their role and importance of, you know, being clear and tasking any sort of body with, you know, clarity about expectations and need, whether it's a very specific topic along those lines, and, and at higher levels. So, yes, Crystal, I can tell you.
I agree with what you're saying a hundred percent in that, and certainly I want to make sure, though, it is kind of, in, in order to understand sustainability, we also have to understand what patterns have already formed. And so, again, that's that data piece, right? And I don't know that we can a hundred percent put our thumb on that and say, well, every year at this meeting, we have whatever, you know, what, what, have we done that work to know exactly? Are we just sort of summarizing, well, it looks like this year at, you know, Jewish American Heritage Bunch looks less than two years ago, so it appears this way. But what are the actual data markers there to understand what it is that we are seeing in terms of identifying a pattern? That's how we create a level of sustainability, that's how we understand where we need to evolve to.
Yeah.
We can't do that without understanding where we're coming from, so we need to, we need to see that. And I don't know if we have that, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but I would certainly think that we should kind of pull together to identify that. And then simply to understand that there are going to be ebbs and flows in that participation and engagement, it just is.
Yeah.
And, and, but understanding why that might be.
Yeah. Okay, very good. We'll come to Jeff, and then I'm going to, we'll get to some kind of final thoughts from each of you as commissioners.
You know, moving ahead if possible, I think it's important to look to stay flexible. This is kind of why in my brain, as I brainstorm some of this, I thought about a quarterly event, or more of a quarterly model. It doesn't mean that the, the group, if it was formed, wouldn't, wouldn't continue to work, but it would be more of a work group, you know, an ongoing work group, if possible, than a formal business meeting. I mean, if we want to get things done, right, we have to move past the formal monthly business meeting model, right? And again, as was suggested, take the show, take the show on the road out into the community, into the various segments of the community, and the various geographic areas of the community. And so, doesn't mean this group wouldn't work as hard as the other commissions, but they might be on a little bit of a different incremental time schedule, and how their meetings operate might be different.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I want to, in our kind of remaining time, I want to, first starting with you commissioners, all of you, really kind of from a value proposition perspective, just briefly, your single most important item that you found of value in your service to the community, and that you'd like to change? You'd, you'd want to change in your service to the community in terms of kind of the how you participated and engaged and overall, so wanting to know if I can kind of be open-ended here, any of you would like to respond to that and kind of?
And, and I want to bring just quick content to that, to this question as well, is the things that we are doing well with commissions, boards, committees, task force, et cetera, the list, we want to note those. the list, we want to note those. We want to do more of the things that commissions feel engaged with. If there is something that we need to change, obviously, we've talked about some of those changes already with annual reports and things like that. If there is something that we need to change that hasn't yet been mentioned, then we'd like to hear that as well. We don't need to hear necessarily, don't feel like you have to contribute. This is one of those things that like, if there is something that is like, you know what, I really love this about being a commissioner, and I really wish I could change this about being a commissioner. Just a quick and dirty in 10 seconds would be great.
Thank you. Yeah, it's all kind of a final jeopardy. So I'll put, I'm going to Denise, I'm going to put you on the spot with, oh, was your, somebody, well, I'll give you a hiatus, Denise. Yeah. I was going to put you on the spot to go first, but go ahead.
I just, I was waving my arm before and I.
Yeah, I apologize. Good. Yeah.
I think the thing that I took the most out of it was being able to go out and talk to people and represent the community. But I think what I'd like to change is I never really knew what you wanted me to represent. I represented what I thought and brought up what the good things I saw. I was not bad mouthing the community, but I really never knew what, what was the message you wanted to convey to people when we're at these ribbon cuttings and unveilings and park openings. But I don't know what you want me to say. And I think that goes back to what Kathy said, you know, with the community service, we never interacted with the city council. I never had any of you ask me, what do you think is going on? Or how is it going? Or what do you need us, what do you need from us? And I think I've talked to all of you at some time, point or another at different places, but.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. So kind of what is representation? And then, go ahead Kathy, and then we'll go to.
What I found of value is I, I came to the commission as someone who could recognize that raising my fam, my children was easier because I had the community services. I had the classes, I had the events, and I realized the importance of that. And I've really founded a value that I've been able to take that and share with, with, just, I shared with rotary, rotary groups, the chamber commerce, different groups of people, the amazing things that are in our community services and the services available. I've just have loved that I've been able to do that. The, the most frustrating or challenging thing was, you know, you come into the role and you don't really get told what you're supposed to do. You have excitement. You want to make change. You want to, you know, be a contributor. And really, the last couple of years has just felt like I just listened to a report once a month from staff and that's it.
Okay.
So what I'd like to change is actually have had direction and, and feel like I had more contribution.
Okay, good. Other thoughts on, yeah, LaSalle, did you have some?
If there's more of an opportunity when we're going to events to actually physically be able to serve, I know I've, I've gone to some of the senior events where we've actually handed out food. And I know, I understand that if you're an elected or even you're in a commission, the staff is amazing to us. I mean, they make you feel like a rock star. But I, I think if whatever this new commission looks like, it would be great if there was an actual opportunity for people to physically, and I don't know, I'm not speaking for the ready commission because I'm not sure if they have more of that opportunity, but I know being on the community services side, I would love the invitation for something like that where we can physically be involved versus just taking a photo and, you know, the, I, I remember when I joined on, someone said, well, just be good at smiling and waving, you know, and I don't think any of us are on the commission to do that. I think we really do are here for the right reasons. We have a heart to serve. And so if there's a way to really integrate that, knit that into that future position, I think it's really going to be important.
So something even more kind of hands on that way. Yes, you want to, and then I'll cover it this way?
I think for the single most item that I find value is that when I'm in the community, for example, when I went to visit the special needs community during their Christmas event that I feel that I am proud that to be there to represent the city and to, to show love and support to that community. So that's the value I find that serving on this community
Yeah.
and on this commission. And the things that I would like to see the change is to have that specific purpose so that we're feeling, we're doing something important for the betterment of our community and we're not just sitting through a business meeting.
Okay, very good. And on this side, Denise, I'll come back to you.
Great. I think the single most important value that I found was being able to give out the proclamations at our city council, at our ready commission meeting, because they showed on their faces and in their tears that they truly meant something in this city and that we truly care. So that's my greatest value. I would say to find anything that I would change, initially, it would be that the rated commission is not here to listen to everything that has to do with someone discriminating against you. And I think that was the biggest platform that everyone came to us, you know, this is going on, this is going on. What are you guys on the ready commission going to do? So the, the change that I would like to have a clear example and a mission and a purpose and a direction of what the ready commission was.
Very good. Thank you. Another example of that purpose, clarity of purpose and role. And yeah, Jackie?
What I loved is the opportunity for representation. I think we all brought different skills, different experiences from our life that we were able to bring to the table and serve to, to represent our community. So I think that was really, really good. We have learned a lot from each other, which I think has been a beautiful part of being on this commission. Every single meeting, we would walk out with smiles on our faces because it just changed our lives. Showing up at a ready commission meeting changed lives and gave people hope. So that was inspiring. The hard part was while we were under an advisor, while we were seen as advisors, we didn't feel like advisors. We didn't feel like our voice was being heard. Like rather than go and report, this is what we did at our meeting, we didn't say, this is what we advise the city council to do because of our meeting. How important is that? I mean, simple case in fact, right? We had said, we advise you to, to look at the commissions as opposed to you guys looking at the commissions and then listen to what we may think about it. But those are the main things. And I also learned I never want to be a politician.
Okay.
I would agree. Proclamations were important piece of the work that we did, but really what it was, was providing that safe space for our youth to be, or even anyone who was part of a underrepresented group or supporter of, or, or whatever. It was really about that safe space and being able to be trusted by the community and those individuals to be the voice at that point. And that was a really, really powerful thing in order to serve our communities to ensure that everyone's voice was heard through that safe space, through what we provided. In terms of the, the, the change, I agree with Jackie, and I would take it even one step further. Not only was it that piece of not feeling that, I felt like there were times where everything that we stood for and we did wasn't necessarily the lens in which our council saw us, if that makes sense. So for example, I, I can say, everyone has a voice, everyone needed to be heard and have that safe space. But at the same time, I'm not the chamber chair. I'm not a state representative somewhere. I'm not doing those things, but to, to, I, I still bring value to this commission. I still bring value to this city and I wanted, and that would be what I would change. It's a two-way road. I will own half of that. I would want that my relationships with the council would have developed further than they did or have. And we're not done yet. So there's still, there's still time to continue to work on that. And I'll, I'll own my part of that as well. But I think that that's something where we individually need to feel valued by our council to continue to do the good work that we do, not just as a whole body, but as an individual.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I think, Adam, we heard, we heard from you earlier. Oh, no, I apologize. Go ahead, Adam. Yeah.
Well, first off, having the privilege to serve the community, to learn the needs, the humanity, the values of the community, being a participant in so many events, all of that stuff is just wonderful. I highly encourage anybody who has the opportunity to do it. It is just absolutely enjoyable. Things like the art mural and celebrating not only the arts, but also our diverse cultures, wonderful stuff. Where I feel we could improve, as someone who has the fortune of being able to work with a variety of different economic and workforce development and business communities throughout, not only Temecula, but the region, I would have liked to have done a better job sharing the information that I'm finding as I'm bopping around 16 different cities and working with a variety of different groups, economic workforce development and all that, and sharing some of that information and intel. I would have liked to have shared that better so that you guys could have benefited more from it. I mean, I'm getting great mileage and all, but I might as well leverage some of that too.
Thank you. Scott.
I agree with everything that was said. The proclamations were one of the greatest pieces of this. And so the loss that the city council suffered, should be suffering, whatever, those things should really be at you and not us. But man, when you gave them to us, it was unbelievable. And I can't even thank Randy and our staff enough for reaching out to the kids in the community and their advisors and bringing them in. We had some of the most incredible presentations from kids who are not feeling heard, and we gave them a space to be heard. And I hope that you will take it back and you will rejoice in that because it, hands down, best thing about it. The single most important thing that I would change goes back, I think, to what Commissioner Wilson said at the beginning, which is people come to us with injustices or things that are going on in the community, whether it's on the school board or at their own school, or the football game that somebody mentioned up front. And we're like, oh, you know, my role is an advisor to the city on the programs that go through the city. Thank you for that. I, I feel like, I always say that when I joined Ready, I gave up being an activist and I wish that there was a way to weave those two together a little bit more. And just, and I think that's just about being heard. So if people come to us with something to have a forum, to be able to say to the city council, like, hey, we just heard about this, like, take the ball because you have the power and we're the advisors. But that was the big thing. I'd also get rid of the Brown Act because it's really hard to have a conversation.
Okay. Well, Randy, we'll work on that. We'll rescind the Brown Act at the state level. No, just kidding. Yeah. No, I appreciate the, appreciate the casualism. Good. To that end, I'm going to pivot back to council here. And first of all, I want to apologize for running a bit long. Thank you. Thanks to all of you for your patience and working with the format. And as you're trying to keep time, I apologize, we are running a bit long. We want to, we importantly need to hear from council here before we formally wrap up. So, but I want to thank you again for the opportunity to be part of this conversation. But I want to turn to you. I know these, you've thought about these council members, you know, that we've had these questions teed up that we wanted to help frame your closing thoughts here and any specific direction to staff that you'd like to help guide follow-up in upcoming business meetings on topics around representation through commissions, advisory groups, task forces, et cetera. So, so I think you see them there. Are they, have we answered questions for consideration for now? And any other direction council would like to provide, or you'd like to sum up as based on what we've heard? We've done, we've had some opportunities where we've summed up some key things, some feedback and ideas. But in terms of your kind of, your collective direction, how, how would you like to share that back to staff, what you'd like to see for next steps? So I'll turn it, if, in terms of managing the conversation, Mayor, you know, I'll turn it back to you as you normally do. And, and I'll say my thanks. And I know we'll, we'll close things out as soon as you all have had your chance to share your thoughts. So thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Yeah, we'll just start with the closing comments from our city council. We'll start with Councilmember Schwenk.
Thank you very much. So again, very thoughtful commentary today. It's, you know, something that I appreciate. You know, I, I will say like this is a two-way street and I'm glad that that was acknowledged. You know, because at times, you know, if, if commissioners, either current commissioners or future commissioners, you know, don't approach city council as if we're on some sort of pedestal or, you know, behind some sort of wall or something. That's certainly not how I want us to all interact. I mean, many of you have my cell phone numbers. I do talk to quite a few of you. And so I think that's important for the future of any commission. All my questions have been answered. I mean, again, the, the honest, heartfelt, thoughtful responses are extremely appreciated. And I think for me, I just want to see, you know, this, the future of, of commissions at a, at a, you know, a council meeting ASAP, right? So we can make a decision on, on what we want to do. So for me, I would, I would like to provide that, that direction of, okay, well, we've had this discussion. We've listened to the commissioners and now what do we want to do? And then we can act on that and, and decide. That would be my direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron? So I, I think we answered a lot of good questions today, but I, I'm, you know, afraid it was a little bit truncated in, in some respects. I'll, I'll tell you from, from my perspective, I'm a little worried about removing folks like yourselves who are willing to serve this community, volunteer their time to be a part of this and provide a perspective that we don't always see, right? We're, we're not, we're, we're in the community a lot, but we don't hear everything. We don't see everything and it's impossible for that to happen. And so having these boards and commissions, you know, over the years has provided that integrity, I think, that, that allows us the diversity of thought. And there's been a lot of good things that have come out of it over the years. Somewhere along the way, we lost that momentum and kind of forgot what boards and commissions are really there for and, and didn't empower you enough, you know, to, to really do or feel like you can provide the advice and support to the council that you, that you wanted to. And so that, that's, that's unfortunate that that's, that's where we are. But I do feel like right now we have an opportunity to direct staff toward a conversation that says, hey, we've got a lot of heavy work in front of us. I think the general plan is a great way to get started on this conversation. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. You know, I just, I just asked Brandon, because I couldn't remember, how many meetings are we expecting of the, the G-PAC over the next? And it's, you know, six G-PAC meetings and eight study sessions. It's a lot of work to, to ask folks to participate in. But, you know, your perspectives are important. And I know this isn't on the agenda, but next week, we're having a council meeting to talk about this. I'm unfortunately not going to be there because I got called away with work stuff. But, so I'll just jump in front of it and very inappropriately say that, that I would really like to see this, you know, sort of summary be a, a strong part of that conversation moving forward. You all have a very important perspective that should be part of our general plan moving forward. And I, I will just say from, from a logistics standpoint, we're not going to get, and we haven't gotten every board and commission absolutely right. It needs to evolve. It needs to change over time. And we have 18 months in front of us, working with the G-PAC, talking about the quality of life master plan. How do all these pieces of the puzzle fit together for the foundational elements of this city? So it's, it's a pre-made work plan for you all, right? And, and how do we, how do we integrate that into that process? Make sure everybody still has that voice, still has that representation. And then we've got 18 months, you know, we don't have to make a hard and fast decision today about boards and commissions and everything else, because we can look at that process and say, okay, so now what do we do at the end of that 18 months? You know, where do we need to be? What are our priorities? And I would hope that the G-PAC and the general plan helps give us some of that guidance and says, you know, like I said, if we're not doing something with recommendations, if we're not doing something where we have metrics on which to base success or failure of this city, then we're not utilizing boards and commissions effectively. So whatever that means, however we want to write that, and it's the perfect opportunity to make sure that that is a part of our planning process to say, every year, we need a quality of life, you know, assessment. We need, you know, an assessment on safety. Are we up or down? Where are we going? What do we need to do to fill in the gaps? Healthy communities, wellness initiatives, you know, all of those things that community services and ready has excelled at. I think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, sort of revision and rebrand all of that. And again, we don't have to make any hard and fast decisions right now. We've got 18 months of work ahead of us. And I'd like to candidly, I'd like to see you all continue to be involved in that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ron. Mayor Potem?
Okay, but quick, I know we've, we're already 10 minutes over, but just to reiterate for myself, some of the important things that I think a lot of us talked about that I've heard from everybody in general is the number one is communication. You know, I think if there's anything here, there's a lack of, there's a lack of communication. As first responders, as myself before and military, the first thing always to go is communication. So I think as a community, as commissioners, as city council members, that needs to change. There needs to be more communication. There needs to be more of a conversation. And not only like this, it's like, hey, let's get out and have coffee. Tell me what's going on. How can I make my district better? What does that look like? Where are my lacks? We're all needing each other to be able to fill in those gaps. So I definitely think that that for all of us across the board needs to happen. Again, clarity and purpose in order for us to be able to raise up another body, whatever that looks like. Again, this has been hit home a million times, clarity and purpose. But again, I think is what Councilmember Ron was saying is the fact that to get that clarity and purpose, we need to be able to get our facts straight. And the G-PAC is going to be able to help us establish what that looks like in order to be able to fill in those gaps, to have the proper communication and to get those problems solved and then to keep working. Because there's always going to continue to be issues arising in our community that, in the things that we can work on. We can't meet everybody's needs. I would love to meet everybody's needs. But if we can help people establish those needs and be able to get some type of foundation as a community, I think we can do a lot. So, and the last thing was in that advisory group, I think myself, I heard a couple of people say two years for groups. I don't like that. I think it's very short, to be honest with you. I would, I would concur with four years. I know even as a city councilwoman, some- sometimes it takes us, like, you're drinking from five fire hoses, just to try to figure out how things operate, and it takes a little bit of time. So I would say absolutely at least four years. But that's up for discussion later. But right now, I think communication and having clarity and purpose, so we can move forward, is, is what my recommendation is.
Thank you very much, Mayor Potem. Well, there's only three of us left up here, so we can do some crazy stuff with a vote, if we, if we want. No, but I agree with what my colleagues said. I'll keep it, well, I'll try to keep it short and sweet. I feel like we have consensus up here, Madam City Clerk, where I would direct you, and if I have the consensus of my two colleagues to my right and left here, to look into creating a body, whether that's a task force, or a standing committee, based on the general pack, general plan, based on the Quality of Life Master Plan, incorporating all of the comments you heard today from the commissioners, from the city council, and bring it back to a future city council meeting, hopefully in a few new weeks, so we can either stand up something, either a task force, or whatever it may be, in the new year. I will say that. And I agree with Councilmember Ron, when he talked about the foundational elements of the city in regards to the general plan. And I also agree that this is a great opportunity for us to get data-driven analysis when we go through this. One thing I will say is that, in my vision for this standing commission that I hope to see, is that regardless of the data that will be shown, and will be, you know, gotten, brought out from that general plan advisory committee, there will always be underrepresented populations, there will always be communities, and events, and things that need to be talked about and incorporated throughout our city. So although, yes, there's going to be data-driven things, I think that a standing commission that follows and focuses on our Quality of Life Master Plan is something that is needed regardless of what the data comes back. I think the data will be great to give specific, task-oriented tasks for that commission. But I also believe that regardless of what the data says, there is always a need for a standing commission for the underrepresented communities, for all the events that we have in our city. And that's what my vision is, is a, is a joining of these two commissions, to evolve into something new and better than before. But I hope that, that made sense for you, Madam City Clerk, as far as the direction for staff?
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify, what I heard you say, what I heard your colleagues say, is that you, you are interested in creating some sort of a body, whatever that body might be, standing, evolving task force, routine task, whatever that body might be. And you're interested in creating that body after the G-PAC has done their work to determine those needs, and include the Quality of Life Master Plan elements as well, as well as any of the other needs associated in the, in whatever comes up from that, as the work plan itself. And then the measurements and everything, while we will take those into consideration, those were, those won't be the only consideration. But what I heard you say was, is G-PAC does, next, next, next Tuesday, G-PAC, you guys are going to authorize the G-PAC, G-PAC's going to go out there 30 days. We encourage everybody that is here to please apply for the G-PAC. The applications will be available online. G-PAC will do its work, and then it's going to make its recommendations. And you want to stand up this new body to address those recommendations and incorporate QLMP and G-PAC.
Can you repeat all of that?
No, but I'm, that's why I'm trying to formulate, is, is as far as, too bad Lyman's gone, process is concerned. What I'm hearing you say is, take everything into consideration that was said here, incorporate, and we'll do a recap next week in the, for the staff report for the G-PAC. And then have G-PAC do their work, and incorporate what we heard, including those items that were related to the Quality of Life Master Plan, into the G-PAC work plan for this next standing body.
Form follows function, yes.
Form follows function.
Yes.
So first we do G-PAC, then we get data back, then based on that data, and whatever else you guys want, we create this new thing. Is that what I heard?
I see some nodding, yes. Although I would like a standing commission prior to the completion of the G-PAC. I understand that, and I feel like the consensus of my council is that they would like to see the results of the G-PAC prior to creating any sort of task force or commission. Is that fair to say?
But how do we know exactly what we're standing up for them to do, until we have the information to guide them to do something?
Right. And that's where, that's what I said, where the joining, and this is where it gets hard, we can get into it, but I said the joining of the two purposes that are currently already out there with the Ready Commission, and with the Temecula Community Services, in my vision of a standing commission that we can stand up literally today, would be a joining of that, because those purposes never go away. And it would be a, you know, we have to go point by point to see how it all fits. And it would just, instead of saying, based on a lens, through the Ready Commission, or through a Ready lens, it would be based on a Quality of Life Master Plan, which includes, you know, a core value that has to do with equity. So in my mind, it would be through a Quality of Life Master Plan lens, all of those conjoined, one standing commission that visits all of that, with the G-PAC continuously giving them tasks throughout the 18 months, that directly correlate to things that the G-PAC are discussing. But we don't have to do that. I'm saying that, we don't have to do that currently. I'm okay, if the consensus of the council is they want to wait until they get the data from the G-PAC, I'm okay with that. I'm just saying that my, my perspective right now is, I would be totally fine forming a commission, but if that's not the, the consensus of the council, it's not something I'm going to argue with.
I don't know if it's, if it's fair to say right now, to stand up another commission, to then look to see, do we need to stand up another commission? It just, I think we're just doing too many steps. I love your ideas, like, you want to put something in place, but I think we have something in place currently right now. We have us, we have the body, we are connected with these individuals, they're still here for another at least six months, and if they want to stay in Temecula, we'd love to continue to hear their voices. But I don't feel as a council, we need to stand up a body, to stand up a body, to stand up a body. It doesn't make sense. It feels like we're just putting something out to have something there. We just all said, we want to establish something with purpose and clarity. That's what everybody said. We don't have clarity and purpose. We're just wanting to stand something up. And so I think we just need to, just put the brakes on a little bit, get the G-PAC maybe rolling forward. And then could we possibly take a look and say, hey, maybe in six months, has anything arisen to us in that time? Because maybe there's things that are going to pop up. We don't know. But we have to take a look first and see, where are the gaps? I just don't want to sit there and bring somebody in and be like, okay, we don't need your services right now, we're done. I don't know. I don't know what, I don't know yet. None of us do.
Mr. Mayor?
Just quickly, and I know we're in the process, and Randy is summarizing, and there, there's a lot of kind of input right now. I think it's appropriate, I know the city manager has some thoughts too. So while you're trying to kind of frame your thoughts in clear direction, I think it would be appropriate to maybe bring him back in. We've been texting, and I think this is a perfect time to have the city manager weigh in. And then from there, we can kind of, you know, maybe formalize whatever the directive is going to be.
Perfect. Mr. City Manager, thanks for taking so much time out of your day while on vacation as well.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, beautiful shirt you got on there too, so I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that. I did want to share a couple of observations and things I heard, and maybe from my seat, as your city manager, maybe some potential operational conflicts that I see. And I'm just being candid. But I'm just going to go through this list in no particular order. The Quality of Life Master Plan and the, and the general plan, there is no two more important guiding documents than those two. So I'm glad to hear that we've kind of zeroed in on those, okay? They drive everything. There was huge community engagement that drove that. Those represent the community priorities that we're all trying to carry out. So adhering to those going forward is, is key. We're not, we're not doing something that the community told us we didn't hear from. Civic engagement is different in 2025. And in my humble opinion, measuring attendance in public meetings and stuff, is the wrong metric. And we've talked about this at the council level, in terms of civic engagement. Another observation, this city council is very hands-on with the general population. I've seen it, I've felt it, I've watched you. You want people to come to you. You want, and that can come in many different forms, and we address things, and you guys are very effective in operating in that fashion. So keep that in the back of your mind. When a resident comes to city hall, or a council meeting, and maybe that's not comfortable setting or whatever, and they're speaking out under non-agenda items, we're not ignoring that individual. Now, we can engage in that individual, but we follow up. And I just think it's important, because I heard this early on in the workshop, we do follow up behind the scenes, whether it's city staff, whether it's council members, we do follow up with folks. So it's still a forum for people to come and be heard. This was mentioned, and beat to death, I think, but just a reminder, the city council appoints the commissioners. So that work plan, that accountability does fall, indeed fall on the city council, and I'm glad to hear that was acknowledged today. The general plan advisory committee, you've heard it, we're on the eve of standing up something pretty amazing. It's been 20 years. These 15 or so individuals that you guys are going to pick in short order are going to touch everything in the city. I, and my, my professional recommendation is that we let the G-PAC run its course. Let's wait and see. You guys will be appointing individuals. We don't yet know what those glaring holes or needs are, but we will know at the end of 12 to 14 months, because those are going to be rolled into the general plan for planning purposes over the next 20 years. That would be really the key time to sort of regroup and sort of ask ourselves, okay, we need a workshop, we need a, we need a workforce, we need a task force, we need a standing committee, and this is what we want to charge them, because we just spent the last 14 months listening to our residents in all these varied areas. That would be data. That would be a data-driven, actionable, policy-related item. And then lastly, the only thing I'm going to say is, and this is where conflict kind of gets into play, we do an amazing job working through city council subcommittees, okay? We got over 50 of them. And I use those to my advantage to get things done. And I think it's fair to say that all of you don't really care for bureaucracy, you want to move fast, you want to get things done. So many times, we're taking the business of what we described as potentially going to the commission, and we push it through a city council subcommittee. And that's, that for me, is an operational conflict. And I, down the road, when we reopen this conversation, I could use that direction or consensus too. Because if I'm operating in a fashion that isn't consistent with what, you know, the five of you want, then I'll change the way I process things. But we've been very effective in utilizing city council ad hoc subcommittees, maybe to the chagrin of current and past commissioners. So I just want to leave the council with that, and I look forward to, to the future conversations. So thank you for letting me jump in.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I, can I jump in real quick on something?
Absolutely.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, right now, we're, yes, we're three here, but there's five. And we ran overtime. Is it possible, Randy, if we can take this vote to the city council, to be able to just have a better discussion about it?
Yes, so there's, there's no, this is just general direction.
That's what I'm saying, like, the direction itself?
Yes.
Can we re, re-bring this back to the council on that Tuesday, just to say, hey, listen, I know our two council members have family things that they had to do. Can we just go forward with that? And, and just getting more specific on what we're wanting to do?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to your colleagues, who are both shaking their head.
No.
Councilmember Ron, do you want?
Well, I, I don't know why we would. I think we had a pretty robust discussion here. So, you know, it's general direction. If Zach and Stu want to provide some additional general direction, reach out, and let them know. Because what they're tasked with, based on the conversation here, is taking this information, then bringing something back to the council, saying, this is what we think we heard you say, right? So I don't think we need a, a secondary discussion on it, but, you know, and I've got my opinions about what we probably need to do, and a little bit more clarity from, from my perspective.
It's more the clarity of what we want, because when these guys come back and go, we want something different.
Well, just to jump in, so, so just like a, any sort of workshop, I think, I think we got general direction. And, but we're not asking the council to vote on anything today. Randy and I need to regroup. This is going to see the light of day in the very near term. It's got to go in front of the full city council. We'll be rehashing a lot of these things, we'll be bringing up things, but that's where the policy decision is going to be made, or not made. So you will see this in the very near term, and that's always been the plan.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Councilmember Ron?
And, and if I may, I think the, the piece of the puzzle here is, so when we've gone through like QLMP, or any large documents in the city's history, we have, in the past, always kicked those to our boards and commissions for comment and review in their own meetings. All I'm saying is, if we've got, you know, two commissions here that are sunsetting at the end of this year, but an incredible talent pool of folks willing to dedicate, if you are willing to continue that, you know, service to the committee, I don't know why we just don't roll them into the G-PAC, and just have them, you know, provide that input. I know it's going to be a little unwieldy, so Brandon, I'm looking to you, you know, a little bit on this, because we do have a lot of other positions we need to fill on that. But, you know, I'd like to be given that opportunity, because again, you know, they're, they're looking at it from a very different lens. Some of it's, you know, a special needs lens, some of it's a housing lens, some of it's a, you know, a mom raising kids in Temecula lens, right? You all have a particular input that we valued. I don't know why we wouldn't continue valuing that as we move forward on the most important foundational document in the city. Continue that. And then again, in that process, that's where we get to the specificity of, do we need a, a longer-term commission, or a task force, or whatever it is that, you know? And we're expecting you all to participate in that process, just like we will, to say at the end of this, what is it in 18 months we want to see come out of this, with the guidance from G-PAC, with the guidance from, you know, the, the documents with the QLMP and others, and, you know, and formulate all of that over the next 18 months. I don't think we have to make a decision here right now, today. But I also don't want to lose the talent pool we have right now in moving forward.
So Councilmember Ron, I do want to, since, and this staff report is literally being finalized right now, and will be in the, in the agenda packet this week. So again, the nomination process, you will be appointing members to the G-PAC. It is the council that controls who is going to be on the G-PAC. That nomination period is opening up, August 15th through September 15th. Everybody that is sitting here that is interested can absolutely apply, and we encourage you to apply. It, it, it is, we are hopeful that that applicant pool will be wide and large, and, you know, I mean, just, it will include not only our existing commissioners, but maybe even other stakeholders in the community who are interested in this process. At the end of the day, it is up to you on who you would like to appoint. I also want to recognize that anytime we have done a, for example, the QLMP update, or the QLMP, the QLMP update, community development went to each of the commissions and said, hey, what do you think, and in the case of Ready Commission, they even had an opportunity to directly work on a core value, right? So no matter what, the existing commissions will have some sort of role in the general plan update process. In addition to that, if they would like to apply to serve on that G-PAC, that general plan advisory committee, for that 12 to 18-month process, in addition to comments through their existing commissions, they can also apply and serve. I hope that helps with the clarity.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, why, why do we have to have them apply? I mean, why, why aren't we just rolling them into the G-PAC?
So that is something that the full city council will need to give staff direction.
And that's, and that's what I'm saying, is, I don't know why we're not doing that, and why we're complicating it more than, than necessary. Because if we, if we still had these commissions in place, we would still be kicking the general plan to them, you know, over the next 18 months to comment on periodically and provide input. So, you know, all I'm saying is, let's make our lives easier. Let's keep the interested and talented folks we have, who are willing to volunteer for the city, not have to go through another application process or anything else, but, but realize that this is how we wind down Ready and Community Services into, you know, something we're already doing as a city. And then we have that period of time to kind of figure out, and functionally, what does, you know, the form look like, you know, for some future thing that we may or may not need.
And next Tuesday, if that is the direction from a majority of the council, we can absolutely do that. This is your next Tuesday conversation, literally. Do you want 15 members? Do you want more? Who do you want? Do you want a general application period? Do you not want a general application? You know, so all of this is exactly what you will be voting on, on Tuesday night.
Perfect. No, I agree. And I think it's important to note that if you do interview and you are selected to the G-PAC, we're also going to have separate stakeholder interviews, where you may not be on that 15-member G-PAC, but we can still interview you as a stakeholder to get your input on the general plan moving forward. So whether we come to a consensus on 15, and we bring all the community members on there, TBD, to be determined. But I, hopefully you have general consensus. It sounds like, you know, even with city manager's input, wait until the G-PAC is done with their, all the work that they're going to do, to see what our commission looks like moving forward. That way we have a, a data-driven analysis. And just copy and paste everything you said earlier into that.
Read that.
All right. Well, with that, unless there's any other comments from commissioners or city council, we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for being here. Thank you again for the public for coming out. Thank you all for being here, thank you again for the public for coming out, and we will all see you next Tuesday at the city council meeting. Have a great day.